Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Titusville Council Meeting of May 22, 2018 at 6:30. I call, we have a quorum. I'll call this meeting to order. Are there any ministers in the House that would like to say the invocation? Not seeing any. Let's join me in a moment of silence, please. Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special recognitions and presentations left over from the last meeting, so we'll go to, we'll start with minutes, approval of minutes.
I'd move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on March 27, 2018. And there were two, April 24, 2018, and May 8, 2018.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign. Passes unanimously, as I said before. There's nothing left over from the last meeting, so we'll go to item six, boards and commissions. Mr. City Manager, Star of Preservation.
Yes, sir. Mayor, if we could go back to the minutes, I think we missed one. We heard 27 March, 5:30 meeting, and I think we missed the 27 March, 6:30 meeting.
That should have been 27.
The two meetings on 27. And April 24, and then May 8. Did you get them all? Okay. Thanks for clarification. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right, boards and commissions.
Yes, sir. The regular member from the Historic Preservation Board, Richard Dwell, has submitted his resignation effective 7 May, 2018. His term will expire on 31 October, 2018. Dennis Jonas, engineer resident, and Jeffrey Upton, realtor resident, currently serve as alternate board members. Mr. Jonas's term will expire on 31 October, 2019. Mr. Upton's term will expire on 31 October, 2018. Mr. Jonas and Mr. Upton have both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as regular member. There are no other applications on file, and staff recommends that you accept the resignation of regular member Richard Dwell from the Historic Preservation Board with a term to expire on 31 October, 2018, and appoint one regular member to the board with the unexpired term on 31 October, 2018.
So I need a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Dwell with regrets and appoint one of those two gentlemen for the term that ends October 31, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the resignation and appoint Mr. Jonas as the primary and Mr. Upton as the alternate.
Second. That would be a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign.
Yes, sir. The next agenda item is the Titusville Housing Authority. There is a seven-member board appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council. The term of regular member Fletcher Portlock will expire on 31 May, 2018. He's expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this authority and has requested reappointment to a four-year term to expire on 31 May, 2020. There are currently no other applications on file, and staff recommends you reappoint one regular member to the Titusville Housing Authority for a term to expire on 31 May, 2022. The members appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council.
I'd like to reappoint Mr. Portlock. I've known him a number of years, and he's a fine man. Are there any objections?
None.
I see none, so that will stand. That appointment will stand. Thank you. Next, sir.
My next item, sir, is petitions and requests.
Oh, right. Anybody like to speak on the petitions and requests? Sorry, why don't you come up and have a seat over here? That's all right. No, no, there's no order. Just come up toward the front. Actually, I think you're next. Whoever I see first go like this.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Beau Barnavon. I'm with Ryan Holmes, a national home builder you may not be aware of. Looking to come into the market and do some projects. I've been developing real estate in Brevard County for going on 30 years now. I was with Mercedes on my own initially, then with Mercedes Homes, Lennar, D.R. Horton, and now with Ryan Holmes. You know, Titusville's going through a resurgence, and builders like ourselves are looking for opportunities to do some new subdivisions and build some new housing. And you're running out of good land. And by good land, I mean land that doesn't have hair on it, doesn't have issues. And one of the problems that you have is a lot of your property has wetlands. So I was very excited that, you know, to hear six months ago that you guys were coming up with the new ordinance as Conservation Subdivision Ordinance, and I actually looked to tie up a couple of properties and take them through the process, and was a little surprised and befuddled at some of the issues that we were encountering as we were going through it. One of them being that the new ordinance failed to account for the existing properties that are wet that already have an OR zoning over them. So for example, you're looking at 100-acre site, half of it's an existing wetland, and there's OR zoning over it. When we make an application under the Conservation Ordinance, staff is unable to allow us to count the OR zoning as part of the 50% of the conservation, which means that you lose half your site, and now you've got to lose another half your site, which is uplands, not wetlands. So there was really a disconnect in that ordinance as it was passed in the end. There's also another second issue with that ordinance, and that is that it said that you can cluster your units and that there's no minimum lot size, but it failed to address the setbacks. So staff's interpretation of the setbacks is, well, it's the setbacks of whatever the prior zoning was. So if you had a 75- or 80-foot lot, okay, you can now build a 50-foot lot, but you still have those 15-foot side setbacks, which made no sense whatsoever. So I don't know how many projects are going to be submitted under this new ordinance, but it seems like the effort that was undertaken to create this ordinance and allow properties that had wetlands on them to then be developed is really going to kind of fall by the wayside because nobody's going to be able to take advantage of it. So I'm bringing this to your attention. Don't know what the council wants to do. I'm meeting with Peggy and staff on Thursday. We have some people that are trying to set up a meeting, but I think it would be fruitful if there could be some direction as to what it is that you guys really were hoping to see out of that ordinance and whether what the end result is has really met with your approval and your standards. And nobody may have told you this, so I'm bringing it to your attention.
Remembering else?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming. I think we were hoping that by doing a new code and going through it that things were going to be easier.
One would think.
One would think. One would hope. But we have humans drafting ordinances and trying to do the regulations, and it's, I look at it and go, it's like the Internal Revenue Code. Just about as bad.
Right.
So I figured there would be some problems.
Generally speaking, not particularly on the Conservation Ordinance, but Titusville's zoning is really all hodgepodge. You know, most jurisdictions, you have a hierarchical zoning. So if you have multifamily, it allows you to do all the single-family zonings as a permitted use. Here, if you have a multifamily-owned piece of property and you want to do a single-family zone, you have to rezone it.
Yeah. So for me, I would like to see us fix those glitches. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would like to see us fix those glitches. And I'm hoping Ms. Busaka's, she's, oh, she looks like she's riding.
Well, let's, let's.
Hi, Peggy.
I was just hoping I could avoid the city.
Okay.
Let's not get hurt, so we have everybody speak.
Okay.
Ms. Busaka, just hang on one second. We have another vice, are you through?
Yes, sir.
I waived my time if anybody else wishes to speak.
Thank you. So mine is that I feel confident in staff in that your meeting is going to be a lot more fruitful than what we're going to try to create, probably up on the dais, because they're pretty good. But I also, like, we need houses like yesterday, in my opinion. And because of that, I am eager to see how we make that happen in a way that allows for smart growth. As any developer that comes to Titusville, you know we care about our wetlands.
Of course.
We get that. And so just know that that is, I believe that that is the intent of what was tried to get done. But if it's not working in practical reality for, to allow for development and for whatever we have left, then we probably need to take a look at that. So I'm sure that we'll get briefed about how this goes, probably, if there are some hiccups or whatnot. But if at some point during this process that there are some additional things that you may feel would be beneficial, like any other citizen of the community or person who would like to come here, in the same way that you're extending your concerns right now, I would welcome those concerns moving forward. So, thank you.
Ms. Felkell?
This is actually going to you, Peggy. I kind of like what you mentioned about that pyramid thing. Have we looked into that before?
We have not. There are some of us that have worked in the environment that have the pyramids, and some of us have worked in communities that did not. I think there are two issues that Mr. Barnavon brought up. One is how do we fix a very specific issue about conservation subdivisions? We're going to see this come up more. The marginal lands are what's left. That's what Mr. Barnavon said. We're going to continue to see difficulties developing these lands, and we do need flexibility to do that. The pyramid structure that he was talking about is a major restructuring of the code. And what we have been thinking is that we would do that in a progressive way in which we had done the vision, the comp plan, and then that major restructuring. Because what we have right now creates both a ceiling and a bottom floor, and you have a very narrow band. If you do this pyramid, you take the floor out. And so there are a lot more uses that would be available in any given zoning. And some people are comfortable with that, and some people are not. My suggestion would be that was one we probably don't want to move as quickly on as any issues with this conservation. We do have a meeting with Mr. Barnavon on Thursday. Council could give us advisability if he, if you feel like after we've had this meeting there's still some amendments that need to be made, or we can come back to you in two weeks and let you know. It's your choice, whatever you'd like to do.
Anyone else like to speak? Previous speakers, both of them, are quite correct. We need homes, you know that. We have jobs, new jobs coming in, new companies coming in. So we agree with you in essence. Now we've got to get down to the details on it.
I'm sure we can come up with a list of recommendations.
That's the lady who does it.
Mr. Barnavon, as much as you, what you think of our code, I have thoughts, too.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Peggy, you'll come back to us with recommendations.
Rodney Hennicott, 3700 South Washington Avenue. That's not the item I was going to speak on, but I really think that maybe Beau not really knowing how we work, I would think he would want you to direct staff to go ahead and make its easy change. The problem is, the problem is that the ordinance had, was a good thought. It was a conservation subdivision. You didn't have to go through the rezoning, but what it cost you was half your property you had to put in a conservation. And so therefore, there's a lot of properties with wetlands. And, but the city had gone before then and made all those wetlands OR. And then in the code, there's a spot that you can't count that as your open space. You can't count OR zone, which is for open space, as your open space. So I think if that was corrected, and they were directed to do that, the faster the better. I know that he's got a couple of projects that he wants to move forward in addition to the side setbacks. So anyway, that's what I was thinking he was really wanting to do, is not wait another two weeks, but move it forward.
Thank you. You want to stay for a minute, remember else?
I would have no problem making that a direction to staff if the rest of us agree.
To come back with that item.
With a change in that item. Yes.
That consensus? Dan?
Yeah, I'm obviously, and I'm listening to the guy from Mercedes, previously at Mercedes Homes, and all the homes that I've heard about and talking about how we need homes.
Good idea. I'm not used to not pushing my button. I just want to make sure that staff and Ms. Busaka is okay with that direction.
Well, we would have to approve whatever she brings in.
Okay. Just making sure that we didn't just run over Ms. Busaka. Good.
So, yes, sir. Now, what I wanted to ask about tonight was the status of Hopkins Avenue Complete Street.
We just went through that.
Well, I wasn't here. I looked for it on the agenda, and I didn't see it, so.
It was in the last meeting. But it is on, it's going to be on TV, and it's somewhat lengthy, so I don't think we want to start it all over again. If you have some comments on it, but it's been addressed, it's been addressed in depth, and just ask for, ask them downstairs to make you a copy of it.
So if I need more information, I'll read the minutes or see that, who do I talk to?
You can talk to Ms. Busaka, I guess.
Rodney, give Kevin a call.
It would be Kevin.
It's not easy to make an appointment with Kevin, so. I guess he's busy all the time.
I'm sure the city manager will use you to do it. That's not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Center Avenue. I'm bringing you the same exhibit that I gave you just a few minutes ago, and because I want to emphasize to you the importance of this. The, I want you to try to understand that if you have a house here that's, that is on the water side of the dam, which we're talking about, there's 80, did I give my, I think I gave my address. Yeah. 80 homes or so, and then they put a, fill the culvert halfway with sand cement bags. It's like saying is that, wow, what is going on? So these people in Parkland Estates, in which I've met with, and a number of them, are saying, well, what's going on? How can you possibly do that, and we being in a 100-year floodplain? And we go through a year or a few years of storms, and it's not flooded. So it suggests, like, one of the suggestions is, is that, my goodness, there's, the floodplain's wrong. And another suggestion is that, what's somebody doing this? Whether it's the county or city putting this in there, nobody wants to admit it because it's certainly an embarrassment to admit that you put sand cement bags in a culvert that's supposed to be protecting homes from flooding that are already in the floodplain. So I'm trying to emphasize this, and also especially to Mr. Stauffer, because this was his area of responsibility. He wasn't here at this time. No, he wasn't, excuse me. It's the, it was his, he was stormwater, but he was after this was done. So we're asking especially for stormwater to give input is that are you responsible for putting sandbags in here? Because it should be looked into. I, I'm just flabbergasted that anybody would do that because it's not just a dam where water overflows it, it's a dam where you got, it's in a, it's right in a culvert. So the question is, who put the dams in the culvert? And I'm coming to you again because I'll be also contacting the county saying, you know, maybe the contractor did it, but it's something that should be looked into because it should have never happened. If you, if you think, if you've got a house upstream of this dam, I mean upstream of these culverts, how in the world would somebody put those in there, put sands and bags in the culvert? It doesn't make a lot of sense, but there must be a reason. So I think I know who did it, but I would like them to admit it. So that's what I'm looking for, and I'll be coming to you again about this very subject. And this is also the, okay, I'll let you go with that. Any questions? No questions. Thank you.
I do have a comment, however. You can be seated. It's not a question. You did speak to this in the last meeting, and your very last comment was you didn't know if this happened five years ago or in 1980. I've been told these pipes have been replaced. I'm not positive about that. But you're asking us, it's somewhere between now and 40 years ago, who did it? I can tell you, you can come up here all you want, and we're not going to have an answer on it. So keep that in mind, please. Anyone else want to speak to, at petitions and requests? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening. How's everybody? Dwight Ziegler, East Mems. Just wanted to go on record that last night we had, I'd say, one of the best in our SA meetings with Ms. Busaka and her staff, the community, had a side meeting that, for a few minutes without the staff, and we come to a conclusion that we want to move forward as more or less a, not an advisory board, but we need to be lead in that effect because it is CDBG money. And I still say it requires a advisory board, which may or may not advise the city manager a few, a couple of years ago to move forward on getting that board set up, and never took place. But we would, we had a, we came to a conclusion that we would like to change, make some changes in beautification in the area, and we want to start with requesting that we move forward on making a change in the name of De Leon to Martin Luther King. And then we would like to use the CDBG dollars from 2018 and '19 to do a beautification project on that street. So that is the request to start moving forward with the name change first.
Anything else, sir?
I'm seeing some funny faces, so I don't know.
Well, I will tell you that probably about eight years ago, maybe more, that request to change De Leon to Martin Luther King was made, and it was, the community was divided on it. Being, De Leon being a Hispanic name, or Spanish, I guess. And they considered that how they wanted to have it. So I'm just telling you what happened. I'm not arguing.
Right. I was there. I was there. And we, we're not Spanish. And Sam Lopez from Melbourne Palm Bay came up and made a big fuss that it shouldn't be changed because it's a Spanish name. And I didn't say anything at the time, but I would have told Sam that when we changed the name to Martin Luther King, all of our old De Leon signs, we would deliver them to you, and you can change any street in Palm Bay, Melbourne, to that name if you want to.
I think there was some Titus residents in the group, sir.
So, but the community itself wasn't divided on it. It was just a big fuss that Sam made, and for some kind of reason, I don't know if they voted or anything after.
Yeah, I have several people.
But now we're talking about 2018.
I have several people that want to talk. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. Number one, thank you for two reasons. One is that the engagement on a board to talk about how we're going to spend money in the community and make it better, and the engagement on that, I am grateful sincerely. One, that that's happening. Two, One, that that's happening, two, that the recommendations are being brought to council, and I think we're listening. So that is a good step, I believe that. And Mayor, thank you for the context from the previous, from going through that once, it's always helpful. What I, what I do recall is that for street names, that there's a process for that. In short, if you get half plus one, on the folks that live on the street, including you up, but I think it's somewhere about there.
Right.
On a petition, and you bring it forward, and we got a process in place for it. So just know that that is the case, so there's a viable option.
There's a petition form that's already drafted up that we use, or what is?
Yes, sir, there's a process, there's a couple of different ways, whether council's gonna make a recommendation or you do the petition process. We, there is a process, and they certainly can provide that to you and to Mr. Ziegler.
That's what I was going to say, is we can certainly get Mr. Ziegler a copy of the, all the process and the forms, and assist you if you have any questions with that. But there are several ways, and we can talk about that anytime.
And the second was just, the question I had was, and this would be to staff, is that the working board, I presume it's the neighborhood stabilization, is this the board of Mr. Ziegler's?
The neighborhood revitalization strategy, yes.
Correct, so as an example, he's coming as, I'm presuming, the representative from that board, delivering a recommendation to council. I would presume that that's already been incorporated by staff, but I just want to make sure there's an opportunity where a group is saying, hey, listen, we got a plan, we'd like to do this, that that's been heard, vetted, and then where would they be with that?
We expect the plan to be coming forward to you in next year. We have once-a-month meetings, and it's going to take us through the end of this year to get all of those visions and goals that are in there through the process. As Mr. Ziegler said, they, there was about twenty minutes, maybe half an hour of the meeting in which staff was not involved, they were talking among themselves. I did not hear a vote specifically, so I can't say that what happened during that time, but Mr. Ziegler did bring up this issue, and I heard no one who was contrary to that. But I'd be happy to provide him with the information on how to do the street renaming.
And the, just specific to the recommendations for a beautification effort, or stuff on and so on. If there is a timeframe that as a group that we're shooting for, if there's a timeframe that this group has determined that we'd like to try to this at a certain point, that's something that I would hope to hear about, be it from a group, be it from staff, just to make sure that we're connected with, here's the idea, funding cycles get tricky. And what I've, what I think I've found, is that when you miss that funding cycle, that idea takes three more years if it, to come around. So I just want, my hope would be to prevent that to happen, if there's some community consensus.
Well, I mentioned, I mentioned it, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen funding. You know, like I said, that's why the advisory boards in these, in all the communities that are using CDBG dollars, use that advisory board, because they're the ones, the money's coming because of that low-income area. And it's not fair or right for staff or anyone else to go over here and plan what the dollars are gonna be used for without the community. Because if it wasn't for the community, you wouldn't get the dollars. And if you didn't have the advisory boards, imagine what would be happening all over the country. The city, the city and the county would say, let's get the money because of these people, and we're gonna do what we want to do with it. And then, there's no, nothing, we don't see, right now, we don't see any real money that's spent, been spent over the years in that area. So that's why we're saying, we're gonna start now with eighteen and nineteen money, and let's use that money to do a major project beautification on that, instead of using it on streets that was on a list out on Old Dixie.
If I could, the, there's an agenda item this evening, which is nine A, and that is the approval of how the money is going to be spent for eighteen nineteen. So are we going to have that conversation now, or as part of this public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay, so then I'd be happy to go on from there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Since that seems to be the appropriate.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
We'll take it up again later. One, Member Diesel?
Yeah, I just want to say, I'm gonna stay away from the nine A thing at this time, but I am gonna say that I've had several discussions with community leaders, including Mr. Fason, who are very interested and almost wondering why Titusville doesn't have a Martin Luther King Road name somewhere. I think there was talk at one time about South Street. I had not heard De Leon until tonight, that might be more appropriate. But as we know, anytime you change the name of a street, no matter what the name of the street, there's tradition with those names. I remember when we, not when I wasn't here then, but when part of Sycamore was changed, there was some dissent with some people in the community. Sycamore is Sycamore. And I think some people may feel like De Leon is De Leon, but if we're gonna get that done, we're gonna have to change something. So I would like to see that done. I'll simply say, I don't know about De Leon, I'm not gonna, I don't want to be yelling me from De Leon. I simply want to say that I think it's a good idea, I'd like to hear more. I'd like to maybe even attend something where you discuss this. So that part, I'd like to get into.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on the petitions and requests? I see no one, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, does council want to pull any of the consent agenda items? Staff would like to pull item eight F, we'd like to further provide some clarification of that item. And we have cards for eight C, eight G, and eight H. So with your permission, I'll go ahead and read all the consent agenda items for the record, and then we'll discuss those card items separately. Consent agenda item eight A, approve the award of contract subject to the resolution of the contract terms by the city manager and city attorney, including exercising of optional roads and internal terms of one year and four optional years, with one-year renewals to J.B. Lawn Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, to perform mowing and landscaping maintenance on state roads, mediums, and row in the amount not to exceed one hundred sixty-seven, six hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight B, approve the award of contract bid number one eight B zero four four to the low bidder, Affordable Development Division of Driveways Incorporated of Titusville, Florida, for the Armstrong Facility Telemetry Tower Base Installation, in the amount of fifteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight C, approve the attached budget amendment, and subject to the resolution of turn, contract terms by the city attorney and city manager, the award of the contract to S.D.V. Services of Titusville, Florida, in the amount of two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for sewer repair work and replacement of manhole MH four four dash one at Navarre Drive and South Washington Avenue, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight D, approve amendments to the Cathedral Pines section, or Cathedral Pines Two, Section One, Declaration of Deed Restrictions. Consent agenda item eight A E, approve the award of work order number BFAWR zero zero one to Barnes, Farland, and Associates Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, in the amount of sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars, and provide, to provide engineering and consulting, including, but not limited to, preparation of design drawings and specifications permitting bidding assistance and construction administration services for the Blue Herring Water Reformation Plant, pretreatment structures, rehabilitation improvements, and authorize the mayor to execute the work order. Consent agenda item eight F, adopt resolution number nine dash two thousand eighteen, amending the technical manuals and specifications in support of the land development regulations by amending Section Two Environmental Protection by deleting Section two point four Tree Survey as duplicate, amending Section Nine Transportation Infrastructure by including Sections nine dash one one, driveway connection requirements, clarifying requirements for procedures in the downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district, and adding Section nine point two one, point three, point eight, on-street parking allowance, and providing for an effective date. Consent agenda item eight G, approve the award of contract bid number one eight B zero two seven to Maxwell Contracting Incorporated of Cocoa, Florida, for the replacement of forced sewage main on State Road four oh five, in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract. Consent agenda item eight H, approve the award of work order number zero one to AECOM Technical Services Incorporated of Orlando, Florida, in the amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars to provide engineering consulting services, including, but not limited to, preparation of technical manuals, hydraulic analysis, water quality evaluation, and recommended improvements to the Titusville Water Treatment Master Plan, and authorize the city manager to execute the work order. Consent agenda item eight I, adopt resolution number ten dash two thousand eighteen, authorizing the city to apply for state revolving fund, SRF loan, to fund planning and design for the Morning Dove Improvements Project. Consent agenda item eight J, approve the engagement of Robinson Bush Incorporated to provide employee benefit consulting services pursuant to the medical plan, design, changes, and negotiating contracts with service providers, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and authorize the city manager to put in place the instruments necessary for this engagement. And if I could pull Ms. Busaka up to discuss eight F, she might be out right now, so the next.
City Mayor, can I suggest that we go ahead and vote on the items that are not pulled at this time?
Sure.
And then, address the pulled items one at a time. So if we could go ahead and have a motion on A, B, D, E, I, and J, and recognizing that I is Resolution number ten, two thousand eighteen, which will, so you will require roll call vote. But I would go ahead and handle those items, and then take the others one at a time.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I've moved to approve consent agenda item eight A, eight B, eight D, eight E, eight I, which would be the resolution, and eight J.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Go right ahead.
And I apologize for the delay. Would it be possible to remove eight J for further discussion? And then I would motion to approve.
The city attorney, I'm gonna have this happen.
Well, certainly, if he wants to pull that item, then the motion could be amended to just include items A, B, D, E, and I.
We'll pull J.
And I would amend the motion to exclude J.
On the second stance.
You have a second, okay. Any further discussion? All right, it's roll call vote, please.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously.
Cards for eight C?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, item eight C. I did not oppose this, and I don't approve it. I just comment is that we've had numerous manholes that have had similar problems of breaking of near the entrance of the manhole, and other breakage of the vitrified clay pipe. So that's all, just a comment, it's a, it's a, it's a problem that seems like it recurs too often, thank you.
Next item, sir.
Eight F, Ms. Busaka will come forward and explain the technical manual revisions.
Mayor, I might suggest we go ahead and vote on each item as you deal with it. So I, this.
Have a motion on eight C?
Move to approve consent agenda item eight C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing any, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like some? Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
The item is amendments to the infrastructure and environmental protection technical manuals. The amendments to the environmental protection technical manual is basically the deletion of a duplicative language that's both found in the code and in the technical manual, so we've removed it from the technical manual. The transportation amendments include driveway connection requirements that were previously contained in the code, and were inadvertently omitted during the code rewrite. In addition to that, we wanted to clarify in several sections that when we talked about the mixed use, we were talking about the downtown mixed-use zoning. It's identical to the language that's been in the code since the downtown mixed-use zoning was adopted, but we just thought that language clarified exactly what that meant. And finally, there's an addition of Section nine twenty-one point three eight to include off-street parking allowances. And what that says is that in the downtown, you don't, up to ten percent of the required parking on your property can include proper, parking lots that are found on-street. Currently, the code allows a two hundred, I'm sorry, the previous code allowed a two hundred and fifty-foot radius in which that on-street parking could be counted. That was inadvertently omitted, and the staff is now recommending that it be a three-hundred-foot radius, so that people can actually include more of the on-street parking, and it requires less parking on their site. So those are the changes that we're recommending.
Okay. Council have any questions to staff? I'll open a public, I don't see any. I'll open a public hearing. Clerk, are there cards on this?
No, sir.
Oppose the public hearing. Any further discussion from council? And I think we need a roll call on this. Roll call vote, please.
I'll need a motion first, sir.
Oh, sorry, that would be a good idea, to have a motion.
Okay, he's too slow. Move to approve Resolution number nine dash twenty eighteen, amending the environmental protection and transportation infrastructure technical manuals. And by the way, they are hard to read.
They are hard to read, they all are hard to read.
Yeah.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item, sir.
It would be eight G, cards?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty point Sett Avenue. I'm against this for a few reasons. I wanted to look at the, where this location was, and I look in my pocket, and I look on the internet, there's nothing there. It's just not there. So I'm against it for that reason, whether it should be tabled, or whatever on that, for that purpose, but forced mains are supposed to last. They don't go around oftentimes just replacing a forced main. So, and I also know that some force, there was at least one forced main on four oh five that I was very much against it, because it was, it was, it was considered to be a private forced main in a public right of way. So I'm looking forward to seeing what the heck this thing is, and failure, failure of a forced main, what in the heck happened? Was there a material failure, or what? But generally, you, forced main's supposed to last. So that's why I oppose it, and I don't find it on, anywhere in my agenda packet. Maybe it's somewhere else, but I can't find it, thank you. Or maybe, if someone can talk to me about, why isn't it in the agenda packet?
Yes, sir, it was inadvertently omitted from the published, but it was online, it was also in the published downstairs. So we have provided council a hard copy of the actual agenda item on the dais.
Okay. Any discussion from council?
It's not online.
Excuse me?
It's not on, it's not in my, when I went in the computer just a few, a little while ago, it wasn't online.
City manager said it's online, sir.
Huh, interesting.
Any other cards, clerk?
Yes, sir, we have Robbie Roberts.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robbie Roberts, and my address is fifteen fourteen South Washington Avenue, Titusville. Titusville. And I have been a, I came to Titusville July twenty-sixth nineteen sixty-six, and I have operated a construction office in this city for all these years. And actually, I'm here for clarification on the preference, clarification on the local preference. I'm actually standing in for my son Dell Kelly, and he's in the islands enjoying himself while I'm in front of you. But anyways, this, this was a bid that we were two hundred and thirty-two dollars low on. And so we took into consideration the special-
You were high.
Hmm?
Two hundred and thirty-two high.
Yeah, we were two hundred and thirty-two high, I'm sorry. Maxwell was two hundred and thirty-two dollars lower than we were. So if you take into account the preference, I get five percent. Now, that's not, that's not seventeen thousand off the bid, but I could be seventeen thousand low. And, I mean, not low, but I could be, that's your five percent preference. Well, it appears to me that in awarding it to Maxwell, who is in the county, and a very good competitor of ours, always has been, both people, both his bid and my bid, must have been the two percent award here and the two percent award here, which still makes him lower than me by two hundred and thirty-two dollars. Now, I am requesting the council to do the five percent local preference for all my years that I have been located in this off, in this city, paying taxes in this city. I have owned a lot of property in this city, still do. And we've kept our little office down there for all these years. So I am requesting that you award that bid to me as the low bidder, taking into account the preference, the local preference. I have attached what the local preference says, and that's why I'm here.
Anything else?
No.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to address the situation?
As far as, right, Jesus is head of purchasing, who administers this policy. And I would suggest that any questions you have with regard to how this policy was administered to this contract be addressed to Jesus. Mr. Viero.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, sir.
The city's local preference policy, and my name is Jesus Viero, purchasing and contracting administrator for the city. The city's local preference policy provides that preference to both city con, city farms and Brevard County farms. The difference is that the percentage of difference is, the percentage is different for city of Titusville firms and Brevard County firms. City of Titusville firms on projects or awards up to half a million dollars, they get a five percent preference. This means that, and the, the local preference policy reads, "In the purchase of or letting of contracts for procurement, personal property, materials, supplies, merchandise, equipment, commodities, and other personal property, or contractual services, and the construction of improvements to real property, the city council or the purchasing agents may give a preference to a local business in awarding such purchase or contract in the amount not to exceed the following: five percent of the low bid amount for project awards up to and including five hu, five hundred thousand dollars." Similarly, for Brevard County businesses in awarding of such purchases or contract in the amount not to exceed two percent of the low bid amount for projects up to and including five hundred thousand dollars. And this is specific project. The low bid on the project was submitted by All-Terrain Tractor Service in Orange City. They submitted the lowest bid in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and five dollars. The bid submitted by Maxwell Contracting is three hundred and fifty, excuse me, is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and is one point five four higher than the low bid. So therefore, is eligible for an award under the local preference. The bid submitted by S D V Services is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, and is one point six higher than the low bid, and is also eligible for award under the local preference. Since the bid submitted by Maxwell is lower than the bid submitted by S D V, staff's recommendation is to award Maxwell.
That's, system is confusing. And we've been using this system for what period of time?
Yes.
What, what period of time have we been?
Well, I've been here almost twelve and a half years.
I'm sorry, sir, repeat that.
I've been with the city almost twelve and a half years, and-
And it was before then, too.
I'm sorry. Right, right now, he's on, we'll let you back after a moment.
Yeah, I've been here almost twelve and a half years, and the city had established local preference. I don't know if it was around two thousand and nine or two thousand and ten. We had made some changes, but this is the way that it, it is now, what you heard. And the, the documents that you have, that's the latest local preference.
So those numbers, you come up with another number, and then based on those numbers, and then whoever has the lowest at that point?
No, it's really the bids that they submit. It's just, it's the bid within five percent of the low bid. It's the bid within two percent of the low bid. That's the, that's the calculation that, that is done. If it is, then it's eligible for award under local preference. If not, it's not.
Would you like to come up?
Well, I'm contending that with the five percent, we would be the low bidder. And we're in the same position. I mean, it's very rare that you're going to be this close, okay, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. But in my opinion, what Jesus has done is, he's given Maxwell two percent, and he's given me two percent. So Maxwell is still lower than I am by two hundred and thirty-two dollars. But I'm local, and I get five percent, not two percent. Maxwell gets two percent, I get five percent. I'm the low bidder.
Mr. City Attorney, you explain the number of situations to me. Would you go over, I mean, the way, the way-
I believe the disagreement is in the application of five percent. According to Mr. Viero, the two percent for county, if their bid is within two percent of that low bid, there is a preference granted. Not a dollar amount, but the fact that they qualified under the two percent, they are preferred. The city was within five percent. So they don't look at the dollar amount other than the fact that they were within five percent, so they also are preferred. We have two competing bids that now have preference over the lowest bidder. Between those two that have a preference, the lower bid was Maxwell. It's not a comparison, according to Mr. Viero, of multiplying two percent or five percent and getting a higher dollar amount. That's just the range that provides you the preference. And it's not a dollar preference, it's the fact that you are now preferred. Is that correct, Mr. Viero?
Yes. In fact, if I, if I may add to that, I, I think Ms. Roberts believes that the preference, you know, it would be like a discount, while in fact, it's not. It's not a discount. All, all it means is that the city is willing to pay more to a Titusville firm than to a, a firm outside Titusville. That's what the local preference basically establishes. We're willing to pay up to five percent more to a local firm, while a county firm will only willing to pay up to two percent more. So that's where the local contractor gets the preference. You know, if the number is higher enough, they'll get more.
Okay, so honorable mayor, counsel, city manager, city attorney, do you want to pay me two hundred and thirty-two dollars more? Being a local residence, paying taxes in this city, paying license fees? Or do you want to give it to someone that is out of Titusville? So that appears to be, I'm the low bidder. I know I am. I've done this for years, and I'm very passionate about this. So it is, my contract is in your hands.
Let, let me say that it's not what we want to do, it's what's proper to do or to, according to the rules that we have been going by. So it's not, it's not a personal issue.
Take in account, I get five percent.
But you heard the explanation.
Okay.
Member Stokel?
Does the Titusville bid fall within the two percent as well, even though she doesn't have to abide by it? Does she? In theory, if she was?
She, she is one point six higher than the low bid.
Okay, so-
It just happens that it's one point six higher.
That's my concern that I have with this. I almost feel like with this policy, if you have two that fall within, like if there could be a caveat, if you're having two bidders that are falling in that, within that two percent range, there, I feel like there needs to be something in there that gives preference to Titusville versus somebody in the county, when it's that close. I could maybe understand if she fell within the five percent and didn't make that two percent threshold. You were talking a bigger dollar amount, and you're not, not as close. But when you're that close, I feel like this issue could potentially, it's very rare that it happens, but when this happens, we could potentially be losing a lot of Titusville bidders for a very small amount, based on how, I, I, I'm reading this policy right now. So I, I have some concerns with that, and how close this is, honestly. I'm, I can, want to hear what other council members have to say.
I, I want to address that, because what we would have to do to do that is to change the methodology. And I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I'm just saying you, you can't make arbitrary judgments.
It would be, not too much, really. It's if two people, if two bidders fall within, in one's county, one's local, that local would be given the preference, and it would just be for that one group.
I understand what you're saying, and if it was done that way-
Right, I know. Well, maybe if we can't do it this time, maybe looking into editing that for the future, because this, it, this does make me a little-
And I wouldn't disagree with that, because this is a terrible situation.
Yeah.
I say this is a bad situation, and I wouldn't disagree with what she said.
Can I?
Yes, certainly.
I don't think you understand. I could be, the seventeen thousand there is not a discount, but I could be that. I mean, that's the, the amount of the preference, that I would be the low bidder. So you're giving what you're doing, you're only giving me two percent, and I'm still low. I mean, I'm still low, I'm still under Maxwell. If you give each of us two percent, if you take the county and the city, and you're only giving me two percent, he's still lower than I am by two hundred and thirty-two dollars. If you give me the five percent, I could have, I mean, the preferential amount would be seven thousand for him, it'd be seventeen thousand for me. And so I don't think you're understanding-
I understand, if we were using that system, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so I, I should get this bid.
That's not the system we're under.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to take the, the numbers out for a moment. And I'm just looking at the, the sections that, that govern this under local policy. And there, there's two portions. So one is in section two dash one seventy-six, the top paragraph, and somewhere about the middle of it talks about, "And the city council has determined that the funds generated in the community should, to the extent possible, be placed back into the local community." So with, with respect to your business being within the city limits, I, I get, I'm with you. But then it goes on in the next section to define the term "local business." And there's two sections, and it's a shall, it's not a should, it's not a could, but it's a shall. And section A says shall, and in short, within the city of Titusville. And then the next part, under subsection B, "Local business shall mean within Brevard County." So I, and I'm taking numbers out right now. So relative to, specific to this, I think to Member Stokel's intent or what you're explaining, between the county and somebody who's doing business in the city specifically, specifically who maintains full-time employees within the city. And I thought that I saw that somewhere. Maintain, yes. So this was, under section A, it says, "Maintain a permanent place of business with full-time employees within the city of Titusville." So that, that would be one question specific to the bid, if they've met that threshold. And if that is the case, then I get that, and there's no wiggle room on that. So what I see is, in the eyes of the, what was written was that they meet the criteria as defined for local, right? Even though you're the one, you've got the, the shed, or not assuming, you've got the business within the city limits, and they're in Cocoa, it both qualifies as local. So through our eyes, at this point, I think we have to view both equally. Then to the math portion, I go, and as I'm looking at it, I'm going to make sure I'm math right. Just make sure I'm following, right? I'm just going, so All-Terrain, that's your low bid.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So you take your bid, and then take all options up from that.
Now, what, what we calculate, we calculate the, the, the difference between the local firm and the low bid, that difference, what percentage is that of the low bidder? Okay? So let's say, in the case of Maxwell, we take the difference between Maxwell and All-Terrain, and we divide that by the low bid amount, All-Terrain's number. In the case of S D V, we do the same thing. We take S D, we take the difference between S D V's number and the low bid, and we calculate the percentage, what percentage is that of the low bidder? And those are the numbers, one fifty-four for Maxwell. Maxwell is one point fifty-four higher than the low bidder, and S D V is one point six higher than the low bidder.
And, and, and to that, from a formula standpoint, if this is the formula that has not changed for the past twenty years, to, to your point, to talk, to change it specifically for one, from an appeal standpoint, although I'd call it an appeal, where I go is, in the next council meeting we have, is if this is the process and the way that we've calculated this for the past year, twelve years, whatever it may be, that equally, I think that we would be liable to a lawsuit for someone saying, "Sorry, you missed your bid," or whatever shenanigans. Because I have no other justification to say it, unless there was a different calculation being applied specific to this course. And I'm not hearing that. I, I apologize, I think it's not my own.
Well, probably, nobody will ever be this close to-
Ma'am, would you come up here if you?
So, thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for hearing me, and-
We have two other speakers, if you'd like.
Pardon?
If you want to sit further, you, we have two other speakers, two other council speakers. We're not through.
I thought you wanted me up here.
No, I, you started to talk, and I couldn't hear you. You're supposed to come up to the microphone. No problem. Member Diesel?
Don't leave. So to delve into this calculus just a little bit further, just so I understand this, she doesn't get five percent off of her bid for being Titusville. You would be willing to take- take her bid five percent higher if it was over the low bid?
That's what we do.
Okay.
In fact, the award, the percentage of the bid tonight is higher than the low bid. You know, Maxwell's award is higher than the low bid.
What I'm, what I'm feeling and obviously there seems to be a whole calculus thing here that your hands may be tied and our, our policies' hands may be tied, but again, all calculus aside, I struggle with, you know, the little over $200 difference and we're leaving Titusville to go somewhere else. I'm not saying you've done wrong, I'm not saying anyone's done wrong, but I'm saying I don't like us going south or anywhere else in the county or west or land or anywhere else when someone in Titusville is just a little over $200 over. So that's, that's how I feel.
In order to remedy that, we have to change the rules.
I get that, so let's do it.
But we can't do it while we're in the middle of a bid.
I didn't say we could. I didn't say we could, I said I didn't like it.
If I may, sir, we can't do that in, in the middle of a bidding process, it has to be done after it. Otherwise, I agree with the Vice Mayor, we could probably be sued and, and that person would, would win because we don't, we're not following our own rules.
And you didn't hear me say in my little dissertation that we're gonna change it now. And I even said to those people, you didn't do anything wrong, it seems to be the policy.
Then you and I are in agreement, I'm sorry.
And, right, I just, I just don't like what just happened. But it is what it is.
I will also say, I don't like it any better than you do, but it is what it is and I'm sorry I misunderstood you. Member Nelson.
Okay, I think I understand this, believe it or not. So you take the low bid and you add two percent to that and if somebody is within either that two percent or five percent, they would be considered. Okay. And there is a way out of this. Per the ordinance, Section 2.180 says that awards of contracts and/or purchases shall be to the most lowest, most responsive and most responsible bidder of goods or services. But they should also consider, in addition to price, the following, and then it has a list of, of variables. So if you felt like this company, Company A is more responsible or is going to provide a better prod, product than B, you could still change it, correct?
In this case, we're dealing with two firms, they're both outstanding firms, they both have worked for the city for many years, you know, and, and I, I don't think we could say that one is superior to the other or, I, I think they're both outstanding.
So then basically, we're stuck where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else wish to speak and you can speak again if you'd like, ma'am. I, I, no, I'm not, I'm just giving you opportunity, that's all. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Maybe somebody can help me find it, where it says in the ordinance that when you have two that fall within, you have to go to the one that's the lowest amount, what section that's in?
It doesn't really indicate that, but that's just the way that we award, we award to the lowest, right?
I guess that leads to my, I would move to table this until next meeting if there's not a huge time crunch, just so, I don't know, I, I, I'm having a hard time with this one and I'd like to get, especially if there's not clear, we have to go with this lower dollar amount. I'd like to look into it a little bit more so I feel a little bit more comfortable. And then to Member Diesel's point, I would, moving forward, whether we approve this one or not, I would like to see if we could potentially, I, I don't think it would be a complicated fix, honestly. If, if somebody, if two of them fall within those categories, go to the Titusville one. I'd, I'd like to see that in there somewhere, moving forward. So I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting if possible.
I have a motion and I have a second.
Can I speak?
No, sir. You're not involved with this, sir.
Maxwell's contract.
Oh. That puts you involved. I'm sorry, sir. You, you were very silent to this point.
Well, I'm saying you just gotta go one way and then all of a sudden it's gotta go the other.
Did you fill out a card?
No, I did not.
Well, you'll have to fill out one after you speak.
Okay. I'm Brian Maxwell, Maxwell Contracting, known Robbie for a long time, very competitor, yeah, still friends, I still want this contract. Maxwell Contracting submitted a bid that was complete with no errors and no emissions, okay? It's my understanding that SDV's bid had an error in their bid. They had two different bid totals on two different pages in their bid. If the city determined that the low bidder, which was originally Affordable Development, bid was incomplete and that therefore they were non-responsive, then I believe SDV bid, TV bid should be considered non-responsive as well for bid emissions or bid errors. Maxwell Contracting amount was lower than SDV's, we're a good contractor, we've had a maintenance contract with the city of Titusville, so we work well with your water main department, your sewers and all that. Maxwell Contracting requests you award the contract to our firm as the lowest local responsive bidder. And that's how I approach it. So I didn't know if you were aware of that.
Any questions?
Okay. Great, thank you.
Actually, you do get to final vote, so, by our rules.
Actually, it is a unit price contract and so, I don't know if any of you ever put a bid together and your totals are wrong, but at the end, it all comes out because it's a unit price. It's a thousand feet of this, it's a thousand. If you only put in nine hundred, you only get paid nine hundred. And so when you do the extensions, that's what's important, not the ending.
In this case, I'm not sure if that's true. Okay, where, where were we? You were about.
Motion to table.
We had no second.
Uh-uh.
Wait, did you say we had a second?
We had a motion, but we were waiting for a second.
Yes, we didn't have a second, that's correct. I have a motion and a second. I have to say what several people have said, that, you know, I think this is a, not a good way to do it. It, it obviously can lead to very uncomfortable situations and I think everybody up here is uncomfortable regardless which way they, they vote at the end. But, so, I, you didn't put it in the motion, oh yeah, you did, I think, yeah, as to looking at this and I totally agree with that part. But I also have a problem that, in voting for this, because we have our methodology that's been used for years and both of them adhered to that methodology and I don't see how we can just, because of our personal, I don't say personal feelings, I'll say feelings, I want to vote what I consider unfairly at this point, I'm sorry, but it's the way it is. So I'll, anybody, anybody else want to speak? Yes, Member Nelson.
I tend to agree with you. Right now, we have a rule in place, we may not agree with the rule, but I think we have to live with the rule and then if we want to change that rule, we change it. But I don't see what benefit there is in tabling this for two weeks because we're gonna stay, come back, we're still gonna have the same rules and then the question is, are we gonna follow our, our rules or not? You know, it's fine if we want to change the rules, but I don't think changing it in the middle of the stream is appropriate. So I would not vote for tabling it.
Member Diesel.
And that's what I was going to ask, if we tabled it, what are we going to be able to do? And if we can't do anything, then I don't really have a reason to move forward. I think I made it clear, I, I would like to fix this and I think that's what I'm hearing, very discouraging that someone from Titusville, and that's not saying anything against you, I, I don't know, I'm sure you're great, they say you're great, I believe you're great. But, but it, it concerns me that someone from Titusville with a $200ish bid higher is out. That bothers me. But I, as I think about the second, I then think, what does that do for us? And city attorney or even mayor, somebody can answer me, if we can't do anything further, this has already gone forward.
Can I, can I respond?
Wait, wait, do you want an answer for?
Well, maybe you, or city attorney?
City attorney. As you've heard, this is Jesus's interpretation, my understanding is this how council has interpreted this in the past? Okay. If there's any question about how this has been interpreted in the past, I, we can do that research, provide that to you. I have no reason not to believe Jesus. If you're interested in that information, we can certainly provide that. My understanding is, there was a notice of award posted? Has there been any?
Yes, the bid tabulation form was posted, you know, I don't know, maybe three weeks ago or, you know, so, so all the firms are aware, are aware of the situation.
Did we receive a dispute or, on that, on the notice? Did you hear any objections or intend to dispute that?
Well, I, I mean, I did hear.
Prior to today?
Yeah, I mean, I did hear something from Dale about, you know, losing this for a couple of hundred dollars, yes, you know, I did hear that, but, and I heard that, because Roberts was coming in today, yes.
But the process in place, when the bids were made, was followed. So legally, we couldn't go back as a council and redo anything on this bid.
In my opinion, if you have a policy, it's been interpreted and this is the policy, you need to apply your policy.
I would agree and, and as much as I have expressed my dissatisfaction with where this is, I would withdraw my second from the motion to table simply because I don't think we're gonna do anything except do this again.
At this point, since he withdrew his second, does anyone else want to second? Anyone else? There's no second, so then I will ask for a new motion.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason, yeah, no, the reason, I guess, the, why you even brought it up or what I thought that potentially we could do, when I look through this document, it, to me, it's, it's not very clear. Like I would feel a lot more comfortable moving forward, passing this, if I saw where it says, you know, if you have two people that fall in this category, it goes to the lower dollar amount, but I don't see that here. So it just makes me, I'd feel more comfortable, which is why I brought up the tabling to begin with. It, if it puts us in a situation where we potentially could be held liable, obviously I don't want to do that, but when you're reading through this, just from what I've read already, it, it's not very clear, which is what I thought getting us two weeks would be able to kind of clarify. But I'm, I'm okay moving forward if we need to, but like I mentioned previously, I really would like to see this updated a little bit to make it a little bit more clear.
And I think we all agree with that, but it's just not the time to do it because we're gonna get in a legal problem. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And, and Member Stokel, in, in looking at the document, I think for the clarity of distinction of Titusville verse somebody from outside of Titusville, I, I think the clarity is in the lack of what is in there. So if the intent of those that created this policy was to distinguish solely individuals or businesses from Titusville from Brevard County, then I think that they would not have added the Brevard County portion. So to me, the clarity is that the intent of this policy as written was that they, by intent, put both of those in there equally with the distinguishing factor of the percentage. And, and the percentage is the valuation of their preference for, and, and that's, that's how I'm coming across. I think we're, it sounds like we're across the board, we're all going, yeah, Titusville folks should get that, but because that is not, it's not written as such, what we have in front of us is what we have in front of us and we have years of precedent. The threshold in, in any decision like this, specifically when it comes to awarding of contracts, and this is just my own personal, but the, the threshold that I've always thought to maintain as a council is, one, is that, is there, is there a, a potential benefit of gain as an individual or is the perception of? And when, as I think, as a smaller town council, if we start adjusting policies on awards of contracts, that can get real dicey in the perception of. And that's why I think that the precedent previous i- is worthwhile to follow barring that that precedent doesn't violate whatever's been provided. So that's, that's my rationale and kind of why, it's not necessarily what would be my most exciting decision to make, but I, I think before us, the precedent speaks, so, thank you.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Now, let me rephrase that, will anybody make a motion? Because I don't think anybody's gonna like it.
A move to award the contract as recommended by staff.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Diesel.
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
There you go.
Thank you for the civility.
That's right. Thank you, did you hear that, Robbie? Vice Mayor said, thank you for the civility.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Good morning.
Next item, please.
The next item is Item H, can we have a card?
Stan Johnston.
Excuse me one second, sir. You want to say something?
Matt, before we move on. Um, looking at this ordinance, it, I would love to see our city attorney sort of look at it because Matt's right, it talks about local business, local business, as opposed to saying local business versus Brevard County business and it's not as clear as it really should be. So I'm hoping maybe Mr. Broom can make that look a little bit better.
You're asking Mr. Broom to look at this and make it more easily understandable and without question on the numbers.
Correct.
Okay. You make, yeah, that's a motion, do I have a second for that motion? Or can we just do it on consensus?
Certainly, I'll, I'll look into that issue and I'll bring you back some information. I would just point out that in your definition section of local business, there's a definition for Titusville's local business and separate local businesses, county. So they're both defined as local business, but.
If, if there's, if there's a clear way to do it numerically, I think that would be our best bet. I, I don't know what it would be, but.
Well, because you do have local preference with details for Titusville versus the county and we'll be glad to look into this whole process for you, actually. And come back to you at the next meeting.
That's what I think we want.
Thank you.
Everybody agrees on that, right? Right. Okay. Item H.
We have a card, it's Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points avenue. I'm not against all this entire addenda item, but there's portions of it that I am against. And I will read a sentence from the summary, explanation, the background, says, "In addition, the evaluate, the evaluation will also review the water quality of the city's water distribution system." Now, I don't know why we need to review again the water quality of the city's waters. I would think that we have plenty of staff that can do that without having a consultant engineer to do that because I think they know if there's problems, they can look into them. So that's one of the particular items that I think that should be deleted from the contract because it's, we can just do it in-house. The next issue is, has to do with hydraulic and analysis of the system, of our, this is our potable water system. And, and it's, it talks about recommend, to, to make recommended improvements, this is the, uh, part of what it's called, the recommended action. And in the summary, it talks about fire protection. Well, fire protection, like, well, first of all, we do have a very good rating for our fire protection. So, and that's from my experience being an employee of the city of Titusville. And, and we've been adding fire hydrants and so forth, so, so there may be some areas that have some minor, little areas to tweak. some minor, little areas to tweak a little bit, but to, to, to pay somebody an, an outside, a consultant seems to me overdoing it. Because that's not that difficult to do some hydraulic analysis of, of a system and just look at it and see, well, maybe, hey, maybe there's a valve that's, needs to be opened a little bit more, or something. But, but as far as I know, is that, is that we've been doing tests on our fire hydrants, and if there's a problem, we generally, as far as I know, we can take care of it. So I'm against that part of it, is that having hydraulic analysis of our system, because we've had very few changes in our system over many years. Our system hasn't been that much bigger. We've got, we've taken, you know, we've, we've expanded in Grissom area, Grissom Parkway, and some industrial areas, but other than that is that city of Titusville has really not had any big, huge changes. And what, what I see is that in the few, in the many years is we've had hydraulic analysis done of our system again, and again, and again, and again. And I remember time, during Mattson's time, that's back in like nineteen ninety. I just don't think that we need to do it again, and again, and again. Hydraulic analysis I'm talking about. So, and, and if there's, if there's, if there is a problem, I think it's probably, just look at it, you can look at the grid of the system and probably solve it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other cards, clerk? I'll close the public hearing. Counsel discussion? I see no lights. Accept the motion?
I'm moved to approve the award of work order zero one to ACOM Technical Service Inc., Orlando, Florida, in the amount of one ninety-eight, eight sixty-three.
Do I have a second? I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Same sign. Passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir, it's item J, and I believe Vice Mayor Behringer requested this one be pulled.
Do you want this pulled?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, yes, sir. So it, just the, my only, it, in short, Robinson-Bush has been services in two thousand eleven for the plan review. This is twenty eighteen, and so my only, my only consideration would be if, if they are the shopper doing the shopping, to figure out what kind of rates we can get, and we've been with them for as many years that we potentially do RFP to see if there are any better shoppers out there. So.
Do you want to do that? Are you saying that you want to do that before this gets passed?
I, I would prefer that, but just to figure out who else or what else could come in. But I, I would also welcome city manager's comments on that, or.
City manager, is there any time constraint on this?
Yes, sir. This is actually part of the budget processes, our evaluation of our current plans, and this is ongoing process with Robinson-Bush. As we know, we need to make some policy revisions, and they're already working on it, Joe. If you have any comments? To RFP would probably slow that process down, knowing that we're going into the budget process with that. We need to kind of know where we're going to be with our current plans.
I don't have any additional comments. We've been working with Robinson-Bush since two thousand eleven. They came on board when the, the, the strategy was to develop some, some synergy with the county because they were developing some process for their, their Medicare eligible. We want to take advantage of it. Robinson-Bush was also the consultant for the county, and currently is a consultant for the county. But the city manager was moving forward, it's a little bit more than just, you know, working with vendors. It's also developing plan design, looking at, at, at our costs in, in terms of the claims cost, plan design. We've got some strategies with OPEB that we're trying to fund in ARC. So there's a very comprehensive strategy that we're trying to develop moving forward. And Robinson-Bush has been doing a very good job in, in doing that for us, and we, we look forward to their continued, you know, work in doing that.
Thank, uh, thank you. I just, I, I get the, the time sensitive nature, but I also, and, and if this isn't that time to do it, my, my hope would be that because of the amount of money, planning, and so on and so on, there's something to be said for a working relationship where you don't have to explain the same thing that you've explained two times already, because they understand that. So I, I give credit to them for that. But I, shopping around to see what comes back, I, I would be interested in, but again, from, if this isn't the right time for that.
Yes, sir, and, and we are using the competitive bid process through the county, so we're getting the, the competitive rate, so.
Okay. All right.
Member Nelson?
So basically, you're saying perhaps next year would be a good time to do that?
Actually, what, what I would like to do is the, the policy changes that we put in place for this current budget year.
Right.
What we've got Robinson-Bush working on is tweaking those, and then seeing where we're at, at the end of next budget year, knowing that when we go into the, the twenty cycle, we've got another bogey that's between half of a million and seven hundred fifty thousand. So their familiarity with our changes and the, the processes that we put in place would be hard to duplicate at this point, in the overall strategy of coming up with affordable healthcare at a reasonable price. So that's kind of our, of course, the council would like us to RFP and allow recompete. We would be starting with a vendor from scratch.
It, I think it would be good at some point to do that. I mean, I'm not saying that it needs to be this year, but I don't know. It seems like every time I shop around for insurance, it gets cheaper. So maybe I'm just lucky. I don't think I'm that lucky. But it would be interesting to see what we could do.
Yes, ma'am. And certainly, we can take a look at that next budget year as part of budget cycle. But the suggestions, the tweaks, we had asked for an analysis of going from a low gold to a low silver plan, and their knowledge of our current processes and some of the things that we're tweaking, to include prescription meds, the availability to go to urgent care versus the emergency room, other really wise suggestions have been well received. And I, I, I do appreciate the analysis of allow what you changed last year to take effect before you start changing it again, because you're just going to be changing for changing, not really have any benchmarks to know what to move off of. So that was suggested by Robinson-Bush, and that's our current strategy. So we really do appreciate their, their responsiveness to us and as a vendor going through the budget process.
Member Stokel?
I just wanted to clarify, Robinson-Bush is just the consulting firm. They're not the actual insurance provider, correct?
That's correct.
So they, so they are shopping around for better insurance plans and stuff?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Then, yeah, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with it. From what I've seen from them already, and then my meeting with staff on Friday, and some of the things that they're doing looking forward, they seem to be doing pretty well right now. So my only concern would be is if we're paying a much higher rate for consulting fees versus somebody else, but as far as them kind of shopping around for us, I've, I've been pretty happy.
Yeah, and, and, and the fee that, that we represent to you is a fee that's typically larger than what we normally spend because of some of the strategies that we were doing. You know, we were spending somewhere about sixty-five hundred dollars for professional services for them prior to this. But because of the, the comprehensive nature of what we wanted to accomplish, and the city manager wanted to accomplish through plan design, meeting OPEB processes, and some of the catastrophic events that we had through claims required an intent, a, a real delving into a lot of the products and, and services that we were providing that Robinson-Bush already had a handle on. So I don't anticipate this level of spending as we go forward, but this year is one of those years where we needed that, that help.
Thank you, sir. I see no other lights. Somebody like to make a motion?
Moved to approve the engagement of Robinson-Bush, Inc. to provide employee benefits consulting services.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, city manager, nine A.
Yes, sir. Nine A is CBDG FY two thousand eighteen nineteen action plan. Each year, the city submits an annual action plan outlining the programs and activities to be carried out during the upcoming grant program year, which is consistent with the goals and objectives of the five-year strategy plan, strategic plan. On eight March two thousand sixteen, city council adopted the city's two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty CBDG strategic plan for CBDG grant program, which is outlining the priority needs and strategies that will govern the city's next five-year annual plan. Additionally, on thirteen February two thousand eighteen, city council approved the funding recommendations for three FY two thousand eighteen nineteen of the strategic plan cycle, also known as the annual action plan. As a result, staff has finalized the programs and funding levels, and completed the corresponding action plan documents to be transmitted to HUD through Brevard County. Highlights of the action plan and partnerships with five-year nonprofit agencies, with the five nonprofit agencies providing various public services consistent with the approved strategies and priorities are in your packet. Staff is requesting approval of the city's FY, correction, year two thousand eighteen nineteen, action plan as presented and authorized the Neighborhood Services Department Director to sign the grant application certifications as required, and submit the same to HUD via Brevard County Home Consortium. If approved, a thirty-day comment period will follow prior to the smittle of the plan to HUD. And Ms. Bisaka and EB is here to answer any questions that you may have concerning the CBDG block grant FY eighteen nineteen action plan.
Do you have any comments you want to make?
I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. In addition to the money that is being allocated to Aging Matters, the Women's Center, and North Brevard Charities, you'll also note that this is the thirty thousand, this and, the approval of the thirty thousand dollars for youth engagement. And in addition, the plan includes two hundred and seven thousand dollars for public infrastructure, which are roads that are being paved. We have a list of those. And it, the comments that Mr. Ziegler made, I just want to make some comments, and then he can re, at least allow that information to respond to. What he's requesting is that the money that is currently allocated under this plan would be amended. Now, this was cre, this allocation was created because in two thousand sixteen, the council said, "Street improvement programs are your highest priority." So this year, that, this upcoming year would be about one point two miles of streets, and would be two, four, six, eight, nine streets. Next year, we do have on the list, and these are prioritized by Public Works, and they look at the condition of the road. Next year, De Leon would be on the list for improvements. One of the discussions that we had Monday night about landscaping, because this issue came up, was the fact that several people in the community had spent time doing previous, doing landscaping on De Leon, and because there's no water source, the plants died. So our recommendation was that as part of the NRSA plan, we will have more money to put into these projects, and we believe that one of those projects should be allowing us to either put in reclaimed water or some kind of irrigation, so that when we do plant plants, they will survive. Now, some of the community members talked about landscaping and their willingness to help work within their community, but I just wanted you to know that if the council wishes to change these priorities, it would require sending the plan back to HUD.
Counsel, have any questions? Ms. Bisaka?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, so, Ms. Bisaka, how bad is that going to be?
It will take time, so that none of these dollars will be expended until that happens. So I would, I believe because these, the money for the youth programs are general fund dollars, those could go forward, but none of the rest of those would go forward. The timing, do you know how ti, long it would take for the HUD?
You're talking writing up the amendment, submitting it, then reviewing it, and agreeing to it after the fact, which I wouldn't advise.
Apparently, it's a challenging process. So, but.
Okay.
The other, the other thing that you should know is that the county, the city is part of the county's program. So we will be sending this up as part of the entire program with the county.
So basically, we'd hold everybody up?
Well, I don't know that we'll hold everybody up, but it would, it will certainly be noticeable that we're no longer at the same pace with everyone else. It may be possible, and I'm not suggesting that this is a wonderful idea, I don't know. It may be possible to think about this for next year, but there's only about this, about two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Which means that there's, I don't believe two hundred thousand dollars will get irrigation, landscaping, and the maintenance of the road and, that's going to be done. If, we talked about Hopkins, they're spending five hundred thousand dollars on Hopkins.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanted to do this NRSA, because we will have more money to be able to focus in on this program. I understand the community's desire to want to move this along, and the fact that this process does seem to take forever. I, I understand that frustration. But that's the trade-offs with whatever the council decides to do.
So bottom line, if we waited until next year, if we did change it this year, but we made the effort to change it, next year, we would be, we could, we would have a nice street, and then next year, we could work on some landscaping and those kind of things.
Well, next year, we have, with the, the, the council has said they want to put six year, six miles of paving a year.
Right, right.
One point two miles of that is this year out of CBDG.
Right.
So next year, there is the choice to pave less and put landscaping or to perhaps not even put any landscaping, if you have to spend money to put irrigation in.
And the irrigation has to come before you do landscaping?
I would think so.
Yeah.
Because in the past, and this was a frustration of some of the members who had actually participated in planting the plants, they said, "We were out there, we spent money, we did all these things, and the plants are gone."
Okay.
So that, it's, I don't think that there was a complete agreement in that room about the fact that plants should be planted immediately without the landscaping, without the irrigation.
Right.
But Mr. Ziegler may see that differently.
Okay. So I'm thinking that this year, we need to do paving, next year, we need to do irrigation, and go from there. Well, perhaps.
That's my thought. And, and what we should probably do is, if your direction is that we should rethink our priorities for next year, let's get Public Works involved. They're the ones who create the list.
Yeah.
Tell you what the priorities are, how bad that is. The cost of not maintaining De Leon may be so bad that it would cost four times that much if we wait a year. I don't know. But we can certainly provide information to you so you can make an informed decision.
Thank you. That might, that would be, that would be helpful.
Okay. Any, yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. So, um, staff, this, I think, I'm like, this is, I like, I like this plan the best that I've seen, just say no, out of council. Like, this plan is, I think, more, is in my, is the most. just saying, out of council. Like, this plan is, I think, more, is in my, is the most reflective of previous guidance given. And that's good. That, that, that's good. And the reason I say that, the one, just making sure, the one point two miles of road are in the South Street Target area, correct?
I think it's a combination. Some of them, of these nine, I believe, five are in the South Street Target area, and four, oh, they're all in the South Street Target area.
Right.
Five are in the, what we are calling our NSA, NRSA Tier One.
Correct.
And the other four are outside.
What I'm saying is, it's not Dairy. It's not Dairy Road we're talking about.
No, sir. Did you ask me to tell you what roads those are?
No, ma'am. But I'm, I'm just making sure.
No, it's not Dairy Road.
Right. So the, the money is staying specifically for the reason I believe we're getting it is for neighborhood revitalization. Additionally, the youth engagement, Victory Kids is within the area, Life Center Academy, youth engagement within the area, North Brevard Charities as a portion of the Harry Seymour Center, within the area, delivery of services. If you were to ask me in ten years previously, do I feel as good as the priorities that the community has brought us? Get kids busy and don't have that building empty, get the building painted, get some flowers in front of it, make it like a diamond. These kind of things. I've seen more work towards that, I believe, and cooperation and support with that in the past few years. I feel good about that. Being said, the reason I say this, I think we're further ahead. I think we're further ahead. And the reason, what I mean by that is, I just want to be cautious in, as community members are saying, "We would like to redo so-and-so on," that we also understand that we fully are communicating with each other to the extent and pace. So as an example, those ten flower, not even, ten flowers in front of the Harry Seymour Center, to me, it, it was six months. And it was partly because it was wrong season, wrong, you know? But it took six months to get just some flowers planted. So sometimes, I think, those smaller wins, as we're getting to the bigger ticket items, we got to make sure that we're incorporating. So I think that the incorporation of those smaller items or those, those smaller wins, I think that we can achieve those through this year, not from CBDG funds. I think that potentially, we could look at additional funds outside of that. That's what I'm saying. I think we're further ahead than we are. So big tickets, CBDG this year, next year, go for the big plan. And then how do we incorporate what the community is saying, "Well, we'd like to head in this direction," and see if we can pick up some small ones along the way. And I wouldn't necessarily feel we need to restrict it to these funds. So that would be mine. So thank you.
Clerk, there are cards on this item?
We have one card. It's Dwight Ziegler.
Ms. Severs? Severs.
Dwight Ziegler, East Memes. The Indians signed a treaty, but they couldn't read and write. And when we get a plan that's already put together by staff, and we're going to move forward it and approve it, how is this CBDG supposed to work? I've worked with CBDG for the last forty years. If you come to MEMS, you can see all the improvements. So I've been working with these people, and we have, we can't see the CBDG dollars other than some homes that were patched up inside. That's another story. But as it forens infrastructure improvements, as long as Titusville's been receiving the CBDG dollars, there's evidence to show that they've been spent all over the city of Titusville. And currently, there's some streets that was on the list as outside of the area. We can't receive the money that comes from HUD for a low-income area and spend them somewhere else in the city, taking care of the city's responsibilities. And then you say, "Wait." The plan that we're working on is a five-year plan for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. We want to see where those dollars from this current five-year plan were spent, because we definitely don't see them over O and I in that area. So we got a problem. And the county had a problem a few years back during some of this same stuff here. And HUD was called in and shut the program down for a couple of years. And during that time, Palm Bay's population was nothing because it was just woods. And we used that area to qualify for a urban county. So do we need somebody to look at this? Because we need to sit down and talk about it, because just passing something and saying, and we supposed to just sit there and wait? You're using us if we do that, and we're not going to allow it. So we're going to either work together or you're going to work against us, because currently, this, this program is working against the community.
Your time is up, sir.
Okay.
Let me, you can sit down, sir. I just have some statements to make. First, this isn't the first we've seen this plan. We have had at least one meeting, maybe two, on CBDG. Yes, we did, sir. We had public meetings. They were open to the public here. I, sir, sir, you can't talk over there. I'm not asking you a question. Please, please remain silent. It's publicly advertised to everybody in the community, no matter where you are. Whether you choose to read it or not, that, that's your business. We gave, we had meetings with all of the people, and it's not only roads. CBDG goes to many things. It can go to economic development, too, which we don't really do, but it can go there. We made the recommendations to staff as to the different groups that came in. They did most of the calculations on it, but they're coming back to us with our recommendations. So it's not, and, and the public was invited to be in on that, and I believe there was some public there. There was, including the presenters. There was eight or ten of them. So, and as, as far as threats, sir, I don't respond well to threats. "Oh, if we don't do it, you're going to go tell HUD?" No, go ahead. We, I guarantee that everything on there is just the way it's going to be, just the way it should be. So if you choose to do something, go ahead. But I don't like threats, sir. I don't like threats, sir. I didn't ask you anything. Yeah. You put, you give me a bad attitude when you threaten me or threaten this city and tell us that we're not communicating. You have every opportunity to communicate. Okay. Who's up? Member Nelson?
I would just like to say that, you know, I think we're sort of stuck where we are tonight. But going forward, I think it would be really great if we could get a more community involvement in making decisions about how this money is spent. I have to say that there have been times when I've questioned, "Why are we using this money for roads as opposed to some of the other projects?" And I don't live there, but I think the people that live there ought to have, be able to have some kind of input into, "We need this versus this." So going forward, I would like to see that happen.
And I just want to clarify that we send out surveys.
Right.
And of the about five hundred surveys that we sent out, we got fifty-five back. Now, I believe that this NRSA process, where we're meeting monthly with the community, is definitely informing the staff and informing the citizens. So I believe that the next time, and this will be the five-year plan that we're creating, and it's not going to be based on surveys. It's going to be based on meetings with, with the individuals every step of the way. So I think that this is a far better process than we've done in the past.
I, I think you're right. I think it would be a lot of help just hearing the people and, and letting people realize that, that they do have a voice in what's going on, and we need to listen to them.
And, and we appreciate, because they come out and spend hours with us.
Yeah.
And it's really been a great opportunity for us to really understand what their priorities are.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you doing that, because it just helps us make better decisions.
Yes, ma'am.
And I totally agree with that. You know that. I want the public to be in.
I know that. I know that.
Can you see that Mr. Ziegler, whatever group he represents, gets a special invitation sent to him or a
He's on the mailing list, yes, sir.
He is already on the mailing list?
Yes, sir. And also, he's, he's come to all the meetings. Also, we did provide a listing of where the money was spent for the CBDG dollars, and I will be happy to provide that to the city manager, so you can see what we provided to Mr. Ziegler as well.
And Ashley, if you don't mind, I'd like to come to one of the meetings.
We would love to.
I won't come all the time, but I'd like to come.
The next one is June eighteenth, and it's between six and eight o'clock. And if more than one of you plan to attend, please let us know. We can advertise it.
So one of us has to call dibs on it.
Or, it's not a problem to advertise if more than one plans to attend. We can do that.
Yeah, we can take turns going.
We'd be delighted. The next one
They can advertise it publicly, and then
The next one, we're talking about historic preservation.
That'd be cool.
Because of this historic preservation study that we've done includes so many of the properties within our Tier One target area, that we want to combine those two efforts. So that, that will be the topic next time.
That would be interesting, because that would be, wouldn't that apply to the Carter House?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. You have a deal.
Any further, please? You through? Thank you. Any further discussion from council? C nine, I would ask for a motion.
Move to approve CBDG fiscal year eighteen nineteen annual action plan.
And the second part we can do in that motion to authorize the Neighborhood Services Department Director to sign the grant application and certifications as required and approves middle to HUD via Brevard County Home Consortium. Okay, that's the motion, second. The motion and the second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like, sign, passes unanimously. There are no first readings of ordinance. There's no old business, new business.
Yes, sir. If council would approve, I'd like to move item twelve C up and do that first, so Troy Post can get on out of here.
Everybody.
And then we could take up items A and B afterwards.
Go right ahead, sir.
Okay. So the interlocal agreement between the city of Titusville and North Brevard Economic Development Zone requires that the city review and approve the district's budget concerning the expenditures of city funds. The FY nineteen annual budget, operating budget for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone is in your packet, and a copy of the annual report interlocal agreement is also attached. And Mr. Post is here to present, and we're glad you're here, Troy.
Thank you. Glad to be here. So, good evening. I'm Troy Post. I'm with the North Brevard Economic Development Zone. And as you're probably aware, you know, there are actually two zones that we manage. One is funded by revenues collected by the county and then used as part of their general fund contribution. And then there is a city zone, which can operate within the geography of the entire zone. But we choose to use the city money for projects here inside the city. So the budget you were supplied, and I think I sent really all of my documentation this year that we typically send to the county, we'll start doing that practice in future years, just so you can see some of the things that we have to submit. It does include things like the travel budget that I'm required to submit, along with what our capital improvement projects are going to be, and I'll talk about one of those in just a second, along with some of the accomplishments we've had over the last year and some of the things we've done. And we've had a very successful period of time, and hopefully you all know that. I've just passed out a newsletter on some of the more recent deals that we have had. But we have a very good board of directors. Many of those individuals are appointed by the city council. So we appreciate your ability to do that and put those good people on that board. We also have good partners with the city, the city's economic development staff, as well as with our countywide Economic Development Commission, state of Florida. As I'm sure the mayor knows from his past experience in economic development, it's really a team effort, and our team works very well and very effectively together. So it's a, it's a good group to be with. On the budget that we're proposing next year, the way in which we do this, we go through the process of presenting an initial proposal to you. We will probably be back in August or September for a final vote. After that point, we will know exactly what our revenue is going to be. At the moment, because it's set really based on the tax valuation in the district, that won't come out until July. But we're anticipating somewhere around two hundred and forty thousand dollars to be the allocation that we'll get from the city. So the bulk of that money will be going into one of our projects out at the Commerce Park, which is our county-owned park, but it's inside the city limits of Titusville. And we'll do some preparation of a pad out there. That helps us kind of accelerate the timetable for doing a development. We'll also put about sixty thousand dollars into our co-launch operation. That largely covers the rent that we pay to do that coworking experiment, which seems to still be going well. I did not bring a copy of the annual report that they published back in the fall. But if you would like one of those, if you did not get a copy of that, we'll be glad to provide you with one of those electronically. The other item that we're doing is, in talking with the county administration people, they asked for us to start looking at having more of a pro-rata share on some of the personnel expenses associated with the zone. And at the moment, there's just me, the staff. In future years, we may add some additional people. We'll see how that develops over time. But at the moment, it's just me. So one of the things that has taken place in the past years is that the county portion has completely funded all the personnel expenses. This year, we will take a small amount, I think it's less than twenty thousand dollars, and we'll put toward those personnel expenses. And we may also take a small portion of that and put it toward a category that is on our budget, which we call professional development training, doing things, also memberships in some of the economic development organizations that we participate in as a way just to kind of balance that out a little bit. It's, it's not a fifty-fifty type of match, but it does show at least the city making that contribution, and I think the county appreciates that. So at this point, I'll just stop and see if you have any questions.
Have any questions? I see nothing on there. I do want to comment that the city manager and I attend all of the meetings. We're not voting members of the board, but we interact, and it's an excellent meeting, run very well, and you're doing a great job. And we, they give us the courtesy of being, interact whenever we'd like to during the meeting. And I personally think it's one of the most, if not the most important boards or commissions that we have in Titus, in North Brevard, because of what has been accomplished by them has been extraordinary. Of course, the money doesn't hurt either, right? That was always a problem. We didn't have that cash flow, but Troy has just done extraordinary with it.
It's been a good team effort, and I do appreciate both of you for attending those meetings.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Troy, or Mr. Post, I've just had a question. For trap, your travel expenses are, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, in my opinion, for the job that you do. Is that inclusive of international travel and specifically, you know, at the level of economic development that Florida is going through, I definitively think that it is a global market at this point, specifically central Florida, for being competitive in that, although there's a lot of stuff we do at home, evidenced by job creation and business development. I, I just wonder how much time, or do you have enough flexibility to, to really engage the international market?
Yeah, that's a great question. We do not really do, through my organization, a lot of external marketing, which is what I would term that, where you go to a lot of the trade shows and do a lot of the international travel. We do not, or I do not, do any international travel at the moment. travel at the moment, although several years ago, we did have a delegation of us that went down to Brazil. We were working with a group that was behind the Ecklers expansion. We allow the EDC to do a lot of that kind of external marketing, and they do a lot more trade show activity than I do. I don't know if they go to the Paris Air Show, for example, but I know they have done that in the past in the way of international travel. You know, the state of Florida also, of course, mounts a very detailed and comprehensive economic development marketing plan. And the state of Florida, for the most part, represents a lot of these cities and communities in the state when they do do these international trips. So we also, again, working with EFI, Enterprise Florida, and the state, let them be our representatives, and once they are able to make contact with the firm that has a need for a site in the state, then they in turn contact us, contact the EDC, and we work it through that angle. Will we ever get to the point where we do more trade shows? Probably not. This year, we actually will do three, which for us is the most we've done since I've been here. Went to the MRO Aviation Show back in April. We will probably go to the big fishing and marine industry show, which is called ICAST, in July. And we will probably go again to the International Council Shopping Center Show, which is their big Florida show. One reason we're able to do all three of those this year and probably do it next year is because right now, the site for all of those is Orlando. So our costs are a lot less, and it makes it a lot more affordable. But as you can see from our budget, with travel, I think it's projected to be $12,500 this next year. That's actually down from several years ago. I think we had a high of $16,000 at one point. We were doing the space symposium in Colorado. We did not do that this year, probably will not go next year, just due to those kind of budget constraints.
And just a follow-up question. Building a pad site, so we have something available that is understandable. I guess just one of the, as we are moving forward, I think in review and looking at our comprehensive plan, I would be curious to the integration of the next five to 10 years of the zone and that development, in the development of our comp plan for that south end of Titusville, and then in conjunction, that being mimicked with the desires of Brevard County, because they own the park, right?
They do.
Right.
But I will say to the city's credit and to Ms. Musaca's leadership, you know, we've taken steps to try to look at that area that's south of the city, around the airport, to be the future industrial hub. We do have lands down there that can be developed. Some of them are owned by the county, some are owned by the city, some are owned by the airport authority. So, you know, working with all those different groups, we hope to adequately plan and bring that kind of land stock online. The city last year had the grant, I think, approved for the waterline addition down there. That'll help with the infrastructure. We still have a lot to do to make that land usable, but that's something that we would definitely encourage, continue to be in the long-range planning for the city.
Yeah, and I would be interested in what that looks like for monetary expenditures over the next few years. And that's a different conversation, but thank you.
It does need to be done, yes, sir.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I think that's it for your part.
That's it for now.
For your part.
Thank you.
We have no cards on this item, do we?
No, sir.
The, any further council discussion? Ask for motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2018-19 annual expenditure of city funds by North Brevard Economic Development Zone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I see none. All those in favor say yes. Oh, wait a minute. No, that's not the roll call vote. Yes. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. City manager?
Yes, sir. We'll go back to 12A, which is request public services for special events. Resolution number 3-2015 also established a procedure where all requests for funding shall be submitted by one May of each year, so that they may be considered in the budget for the next fiscal year. Requests for public funding are to be included within the budget build and will be discussed as part of the budget workshops and public hearings. It's entirely within council's discretion whether or not to grant or deny a particular request for funding and the level of funding that they will provide. This year, as you can see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applicants totaling $73,000, and staff is recommending that council approve the request for public services for the 19 budget consideration, the budget build.
Okay. Clerk, are there any cards on this item?
No.
Counsel, any discussion or question of staff? Questions of staff? I see none. Ask for motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2019 request for public service special event support.
Do I have a second, please? I have a motion, a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Agenda item number 12B, Community Development Resolution Amending, oh, correction, yeah, Resolution 11-2018 amending community development fees. The Community Development Department provides a number of services to the community, including planning, zoning, site plan, subdivision, and building services to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. These fees are intended to be commensurate with the cost of the city to provide these services. It's been over 12 years since planning and development fees have been changed. In that time, the cost of providing and review and inspections have increased significantly with the inflation rate of over 20% since 2006. Staff is recommending an increase of fees of approximately 5%, although that may be slightly higher due to rounding. The fee increase would take effect one July 2018 in order to provide ample notification of this change. Staff recommends to adopt the proposed fees for the services provided by Community Development Department associated with Resolution 11-2018.
Staff, do you have a presentation?
I just wanted to clarify that the, basically, there are very few building fees that are being recommended for increases, because those were increased two years ago, and we have reviewed those and feel that those are still adequate. There's been a few, a couple of minor changes, but basically the changes relate to planning and zoning and the site plan review process.
Okay. Counsel, any questions of staff? Seeing none. Clerk, do we have any cards on this item? Counsel, any further, the council discussion? I'll accept a motion on this.
I'd move to adopt Resolution number 11-2018 amending the community development fees.
Second.
Go right ahead.
Sorry, I just thought, Peggy, I had a question real quick. What's this Development Review Committee $250 fee exactly?
When, we have streamlined the process. That's why we have technical manuals. And right now, if, before we had the technical manuals, if you wanted to get a change, you had to go to the Board of Adjustment and get a variance, and that cost about $800 with advertising. So now what we do is we ask the staff to sit and to review all of this, and then they make a recommendation, because these are generally technical decisions. And that pays for the staff time to review that, have the meeting, and then create the minutes and that kind of thing for that. So it's actually faster for the applicant and much less expensive. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And second still holds.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item is petitions and requests from a public president. There's only one person sitting out there. Would you like to come up and say hello? No? Okay.
It's a place you could say hello.
All right. Next item is mayor and council reports. You have my report. I do have one thing to clarify. I did not attend the GTR meeting on May 18th, as I had a conflicting meeting come up at the last minute. Other than that, council, any reports? Counsel?
Sorry about that. Okay. So I spent Friday at the Aviation Academy in Kissimmee.
Yes.
I met Mike Kesty, I think that's how you pronounce his name, who is in charge of the aviation college, who will be meeting with you a week from Thursday, and Steve Kane, who is one of the Space Center workers, one of the companies that will be also involved in this process. They are moving forward during the meeting on Friday. They did announce that, to the group, that they were looking at Titusville. They thought we were an appropriate place. And as you know, they're all coming over here to descend upon you next Thursday.
At 8:30, yes.
At 8:30. And then I get them for the rest of the day. And we're going to apparently do some tours of the different companies out of the Space Center, because they're also going to incorporate technology into the program. So it looks like we're moving forward. So it sounded, sounded great.
And I think that is great. We, of course, had one meeting several weeks ago with, I can't think of the fellow's name, but not the mayor.
Mayor?
No, the other guy. I don't know. He's...
Melissa, oh, Brian Camp?
Brian Camp.
Yes.
And we were, I'll speak myself, but the city manager was there as well, very impressed with their presentation, and they seemed very excited about the, what we have to offer here for their purposes, with the airport and all the things that are going on with jobs coming in. And that's what they do. They train people for those jobs, so it's symbiotic. And so I'm really looking forward to that. It was a shame I couldn't make that meeting, but there was two days' notice, and I had other things that were already...
Well, it's interesting, because the, a couple of the guys from BRPH were out there, and I know that they, at some point, want their own building, and they're going to need their own building for Kissimmee. So one was a project manager from BRPH, so I'm assuming that's why they were there, although I was quizzing them, and I was, they wasn't getting their answers I was hoping for.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
They were playing coy. But I'm assuming that's why they were there.
Their presentation was, the first presentation was extremely interesting, because not only is it a great idea, they weren't asking us for money at the time. I don't know whether they will or not, but they indicated that they don't work that way.
They may at some point, but I think they're after more like zone dollars.
Well, yeah, sure.
I'm sure they will be. I did talk to, Melissa Knight, who's the head of the academy, was talking about discrimination.
Yeah.
Which is very interesting. I believe she's Puerto Rican, but she was talking about the discrimination she faced growing up, and how she wanted to make sure that the school was open to everybody.
Everybody.
So, yeah. But she was very adamant that it be open to everybody. So that was, I thought, really great, great news.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Very good. Anything else?
I broke my diet and ate a cookie while I was here.
That's not good.
Sure. Oh, well, I broke it tonight, too.
You weren't at yoga either.
Oh, I wasn't.
Start saying.
Getting dined out all over the place.
Any other reports from council, or anybody like to speak?
Yes, sir. And provided counsel, each one of you has a presentation that I made in people's lives, maybe about five minutes at a time. So, in short, I think there's a question of mental health of our youth, and I think that there's an opportunity to help. There's an opportunity to help. And on the next page, I just put, currently, I think that everybody's saying, hey, we need to help our youth due to recent shootings, and everybody's, these are all different people that could be involved in such an idea. And it ranges from the schools to employers, to our family, to our government agencies, and so on and so on. And when I think of, right now, in Brevard County, and think of our community, selfishly thinking of our community, I know that every one of those people listed is trying to do something. I'm not really confident that it is a coordinated effort leading to the best result. Being said, I believe in the next page, it talks about symptoms of gaps in action. And so ultimately, when those stakeholders listed previously, when something falls short, there are gaps that are created that would be that ultimate safety net. And because of that, I think that the systems reflecting that we're seeing today of those gaps, wherein decades previously, it would have been bad, that we have defined bad differently now. And unfortunately, that results in horrific things like the events that took place in Texas just this week, in Florida, Parkland, and now multiple times in Florida. And this is what those gaps now mean. They have been redefined, in my opinion. So within the past short 90 days, really since Parkland, there has been action taken at the state level. Governor Scott signed reforms specifically to weapons and so on and so on. And although I believe that that was a step, it was action that I, I don't know how many folks thought would actually get done if you looked at the rest of the nation. You know, there's not a lot of movement. So Florida, I think, took its leap out, and we did something. And then we look at security reforms, even with our school, local school district. And if you listen to the past month's conversation, what originally came out is, I think, the STOMP program then has evolved, and it really seems like that the entire conversation of how do we address this gap has now been relegated to who's going to carry the gun, right?
What does that mean?
Well, what I mean by that is, as an example, in our school systems, in order to protect the children during the day, it's not a matter of if we're going to have security in our school systems. It's more the debate right now, what I'm hearing from the school board, is who's going to do that? So originally, it was going to be a sworn regular, sworn officer, then it morphed into a school employee who's had training. But ultimately, it seems like the solution being focused on is, we got to get somebody in there to protect the kids. And I get that. That's a portion of an answer. But I unfortunately think that although it's a step, it's not going to be the step that resolves it. I think this is going to take more than just one step or two steps. And because of that, I believe that the question that people have consistently asked, but is just still unanswered, is who's willing to engage the mental health, right? So every time that we hear about one of these horrific accidents, horrific events, not accidents, horrific events, that are taking place in Florida, that our school, and it was heartbreaking to hear one of the most recent victims in Texas say, well, we thought it was going to happen, and not because that they were any different than the other high school, but because the school students, at this point, when you go to high school, have relegated themselves to this idea that, well, it could definitely happen to me. So it's a matter of when, and that's really bad, right? Like, that's not what I want my kid. And so all those steps for armed response, I believe are appropriate, and that's one task. Again and again, we've heard, mental health, mental health, and what I'm not seeing is any concrete movement towards changing any of that, right? And ultimately, it's, you know, who's going to pay for it, right? And that's what we say. So the quote I put on the next page is my hope for what I would envision as a solution, or a standard of a solution. Now, how we get there, that is a big, 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 big... Now, how we get there, that is a big, 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 big road we gotta figure out. But m- my solution or my resolve would be ongoing counseling to a child under the age of eighteen until they have been deemed no longer a moderate to high risk of injury to others. So, if a person under the age of eighteen who lives in the city of Titusville has demonstrated or exhibited behavior that is high risk to injury to others, I'm going to blow up the school. I'm going to shoot people in my school. And I, I use those statements and just stand on those, right? That at some point in time, I believe that that student or that young person who's a member of our community has to receive mental health counseling until a mental health counselor says no longer a threat. And I don't think that that's an absurd bar, right? The, I'm, I'm not- We even have mechanisms that I think help with that. And once you get past seventeen or eighteen, I, I, you know, that's a different story. And to that capacity, I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have the wherewithal to take that on. But I do have the wherewithal to say, that age child that threatens to blow up and shoot people in a school, who is then expelled and comes back three months later, is not fixed. And to continue this cycle to just let that risk and liability fly out there, I think has proven well beyond what is not acceptable. I, I, I think we as a community cannot accept that as a standard. Being said, in order to pull that threshold or that standard off, it's gonna take a lot of people, because we have a lot of people already working on it. And so, the next steps that I would hope that, that, uh, counsel would support are, are twofold. One is directly related to this, and the other is just a small one directly related to a tone, I think, to move forward with. So, one would be to support a workshop with government agencies hosted by the city of Titusville to determine gaps in service using the Parkland shooter as a case study. So, we have enough information about the, 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 the individual who committed, why committed, was involved in, how that went from Parkland. So, if that young man lived in Titusville today, I would be very curious to see where the gaps in service for that case study. If he lived here today, what would be different? What would we not be able to do? Would we be able to address those needs? Would anybody flag it? I hear time and time again, we get the warning symbols, we get it, we're good. But the help and resolve is where the problem lies. There's, right? So, that, that would be a workshop with other government agencies to figure out where our gaps are. In addition, where our risk currently lies. Is our risk the same as Palm Bay? Is our risk the same as Orlando? Is our risk? And, and I think that that is a fair question. When I go to the airport, there's a risk. When I go travel, there's a risk. When I go to the beach, there's a risk. And right now, I can't tell you what the risk is for us, for, for this. And I think as a country, we, we gotta figure that out. I don't believe that the answer's gonna come from Washington. I have no, I have no faith that they will move in such a timely manner as to resolve this need for our community. I think at the state level, they are not gonna resolve this issue to our community. I think they can be part of the answer, but if, uh, waiting for something ain't gonna happen. From the school board, it ain't gonna happen, and I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to say, hey, listen, you got it for eight hours, you guys figured it out. Uh, it, it, it's more complicated than that. If it wasn't, then, you know, they're, hopefully, they would've figured it out. So, that would be one step. I did reach out to Commissioner Pritchett, Representative Placencia, uh, school board member, Ms. Belfort, with the idea of something like this, addressing the mental health issue through a workshop. And they were all very interested in figuring out what our response would be to that. So, I think that there was, uh, support for such a measure. And I leave that one to stand alone relative to what I believe that their support was. A, a second issue, and it's a small one, but, um, it, it's only 'cause it's in my wheelhouse, and Member Diesel, this is in your wheelhouse, but the second would be a letter to our Brevard County School District. Tomorrow, kids are gonna go to school, the following day, this summer, kids are gonna go to school. And, and there's a deal right now where it, there, we, we have a discipline plan. And the reason I say it is 'cause this is a large population of us, so not our agency, but it's our community. Where, if you bring, uh, uh, bullets to school, right? I come with bullets, I come with ammunition. You can get mentoring. Mentoring, maybe a detention.
Well, it's a third degree felony.
It's a third degree felony, but it doesn't matter, because our discipline that, from our district is, well, you can get mentored or you can get a detention.
But that's not necessarily the appropriate answer to that.
I think it's a horrible answer to that. I think the answer is that that kid should be removed from Titusville schools, placed in an alternative learning center.
That plus, plus counseling, 'cause you're talking about a breakdown in the family somewhere there.
That is such a huge red flag, and my concern is the disproportionate response. And I think that the intent of collectively or holistically, when you look at this plan and implement our schools, I, I get where that's going, so i- it's not to rip that apart. But specific to, I'm gonna carry ammunition with me to school. Now, I ain't got a gun, but I got bullets. Well, you know what? If I'm fifteen years old, it's really, I, mentally, I do not, I, I don't get, I don't get, well, you know, oops, I made a mistake. No, I'm carrying it 'cause I wanna be carrying it, so you see it and you know it. And I would only ask, uh, I would, the caveat to that would be that, uh, you know, students that are in the seventh grade and above, so are elementary school kids, I'm not talking about that, that's a learning curve. But by the time you get to seven, seventh grade, you know what you're doing, reflective of that. So, my hope would be that a letter to, this is number two, is a letter to the Brevard County School District addressing ammunition in secondary schools, being an offense resulting in removal from schools, period, uh, within the city of Titusville limits. So, you're expelled, uh, because I think that the threshold and acceptance of oops or whatever, like, those days are gone. That, there have been too many lives that have been lost, that, that can be okay now, so. Thank you, that was for your consideration. I welcome any questions you have.
I wanna make some statements.
Sure.
Not necessarily questions, but, um, first off, I wanna remind you that Titusville was the only town, I think, in the, in Brevard that didn't sit around talking about what to do about SROs. But we went out and, um, found a way to supply the, the, the most important need is someone of authority with a gun that understands how to use the gun, um, to our schools here. And I think you had some hesitation on that, as I, I remember. But it's neither here nor there. And, and I know you wanna do good things, I really do. And you, you're always into the, into the, in, in improving the big picture. But we're only a small part of that, and this is, you, you, this is out of our wheelhouse, uh, to a great degree. Now, we can have a, a meeting and so forth and so on, but we can't fund it. We don't have the money. And if you look at our, our projections for a few years, we're, we're getting tougher and tougher on money because of what was done on, on OPEC. And it's real, so you can go and talk about it, but what are you gonna bring to the table? So, I would caution you, um, you know, on getting, uh, over, uh, over, you know, you're, you're, you're good at leadership in these things. But sometime, somehow, somebody's gonna have to put up money for it. It's really a school board issue. So, if you wanna, you know, you're kinda going over and gonna tell them how to do it? Well, I guess that's, that's good, and especially if you're right. But I don't know where you're gonna go from there, because we don't have the money to do it. And if, the only other way we can do it is raise taxes, and I can tell you, that's not gonna be real popular. 'Cause we, we've already got a situation. I hate to, I hate to rain on your parade, but I'm kind of a realist when it comes to things, so I'll, I'll let somebody else speak.
Can I, can I bring up something that doesn't cost money?
Sure.
Okay. I was talking to Mr. Broom and Mr. Larissa the other day about the, um, environment, Titusville Environmental Commission. And one of, I was talking to some candidates who potentially would like to apply for that board, for that commission. However, um, the ordinance basically says you need to live within the city of Titusville. And what they were pointing out to me is, when we do that, we're, um, the, it, there, you have a large group of engineers, people with, working at NASA, they're living at Windover, uh, some out on Carpenter. They may or not be, may or may not be within the city. So, I, I asked Mr. Broom about the possibility of changing it to maybe, say, north of King's Highway, Port St. John. So, the people on the north end of the, uh, county would be eligible for the TEC. I think right now what it says is, if somebody from outside the city applies, they can, they can be on the board as long as nobody from inside the city applies. And so, if we're trying to get some people with science, technology backgrounds on that board that can help us in terms of sustainability, um, that would be, that might be helpful to, to widen that pool of what we could possibly get.
I'm not sure how that relates to this.
Oh, it doesn't. But it's true, but it's free. Yeah, I said, but I, can I bring one up that doesn't cost money?
Well, you, I thought, you know, something in regards to what we were discussing. No, that, we've done that already with the historical board. We didn't have enough people in Titusville trained to do that sort of thing. So, we made, uh, exceptions to that. I don't remember exactly how that all, all worked out. I mean, the, the historical board, the house, the, you know, whether, they don't have to be in Titusville. And I myself was a member of the, uh, Titusville Housing Authority years ago when I lived outside of the city for, for that. So, it can be done, and I, I don't disagree with you at all. I just didn't know what it had to do with it.
So, we-
Yeah, I think that's, that's-
We talked about that, we talked about adding-
I think that's a great idea.
Sustainability to, um, bringing in some of the sustainability stuff into the ordinance. And Mr. Broom said we needed direction from counsel, correct? I'm getting sleepy, so.
If you would like to consider a change to the code, then yes, counsel would have to authorize us to bring something back.
So, my question is, can we authorize staff to make some changes to that ordinance?
Do it as an advisability, that you come back with the, the ordinance, is that?
Yes, sir. If, if counsel would like to consider a change to the ordinance, then counsel would need to provide that advisability and, uh, some clear direction on that advisability, on exactly what you want us to come back with.
I think it would be to come back with opening up the pool of candidates to people north of Port St. John, say, King's Highway. That we would add, uh, that per their direction would be to look at plans to sustain our environment. And I think there's some other language in there related to sustainability in some of the ordinances. So, that would be my request. Would that give you enough direction?
For that board only?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, did, did you answer that?
I haven't, I was just listening.
Oh, okay.
You know, right now, there's seven members.
Correct.
And, and that is correct, that you're supposed to be a citizen for at least a year for the city of Titusville, to be a member. In the event you, it's not possible to acquire members based on this criteria, you could go outside, into the county, for those individuals who have an interest or an expertise in environmental issues, is the current code.
Correct.
The current code also says that the commission could devote its efforts to encouraging the public toward conservation of resources and any aspect that affects the Titusville citizens' ability to safe, pleasant, productive use of the environment.
Okay, so basically, sustainability-
So, there are some, some broad language that we could, could look at. And to study in general environmental conditions in and surrounding the city of Titusville and make recommendations regarding environmental effects. So, there's some general broad language of what they do as an environmental group.
Okay.
So, we could probably work within that, you could also add to if, if you're interested. But if you wanna look at the, the, the makeup of the group, um, open up the entire membership, or is it two or three seats, so you still have a majority from the city? I'm just not sure how far you want it to go. We could come back with some options.
I would say come back with some options. For me personally, I, I'm looking for people who have that science, technology kind of background that can help guide us in making some decisions about the city.
Can we, um, do that as a direction, or are we, you know?
If I have consensus, could we?
Yeah, consensus on that, or?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I see some, I see some light to that.
One thing I would also keep in mind as we're looking at this, is you do have current members who have certain terms on the board. And if you're interested in, in considering that, maybe you could consider it as members are terming out as opposed to removing, but-
Correct. I mean, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't, wouldn't, wanna take somebody who has been there and served for a period of time and say, you know, we decided to change the rules in the middle of the game, you're gone.
Right, I think there's two or three maybe this year, and then, so, we'll bring that information back to you as well, for your consideration of this.
All of our boards have the same requirements?
N- no. Other boards don't have that same flexibility of going outside of the city as this one, 'cause it was recognizing the fact you may not have seven individuals in the city that would do this. But also recognizing that you wanted someone with some interest in environmental issues. So, each board is, is unique, so we can focus on this board. If you want, we can look at the makeup of other environment, environmental boards and come back to you with some alternatives for you to consider. So, what I would suggest is not coming back to you with an actual ordinance, making the changes, but with information for you to consider to your next meeting, and based on that, give us some more direction.
Okay, that would work.
Mr. Stokel, is your light on this subject?
Yeah, me on the other one, too. With this subject, I would be interested in potentially, um, during the research, to see if maybe our other boards would have that option, because I know one of my things up here is when we have no applicants for a board, or we have the same one. And it, I'd like to see them get a little bit more, and I, I don't know about you guys, but it sounds like I've talked to people in the community, and they're county, county, and they can't. And so, um, moving forward, especially if it's allowed, and that they're advisability boards to see about getting some of those people that are really vested in Titusville, have been here long, are very knowledgeable, potentially being able to kind of add some value. On the other topic-
Can we, can we just deal with this one for a second?
Oh, sure, that's fine.
Go through it. That you, are you, wanna talk?
Mine's with the other.
Okay, well, we'll go back to that then. Member Diesel, you're, you got on, on this subject?
See it coming. No, I, I, I don't wanna use that word slippery slope, but I think that if we're gonna do it with one, I, I, I tend, and that's why I was asking, are they all the same? And we start getting into, well, this board, we do this, and this board, we do that. I'd like to see, whatever we do with the board, we do it with all the boards. So, I'm just saying, I just like, you know, do, do I, can I ask them to be on this board? I gotta go check, like, you know, you don't, I get a little concerned if you don't live in the county, if you don't live in the city.
Recommend that we start with this and see what problems?
I would recommend that, too, but playing off of, uh, Member Stokel's comment, and one I kinda made earlier when I asked the question where I was going, are we just gonna do this with one board? We gonna do this with all the boards? We gonna pick and choose which boards we do it with?
Right, we can look at that, we'll look at the statutory impediments or criteria that also, with planning boards and your local-
There you go.
Okay, let's do that, sounds good.
Because you're, you're looking at citizens when it comes to your planning in your city. And when you're looking at your code enforcement in your city, when you're looking at, uh, adjust, you know, Board of Adjustments and Appeals to, uh, get variances based on your code within the city. So, there are certain reasons, you know, it's, it's citizens versus TEC might be more of a general environmental concern. So, there's certain reasons.
Your light is on which subject? This, the one we're dealing with now, the boards?
Well, it's basically with the, um, TEC. Well, it's basically with the TEC, and the other question I had was, can we ask them to look at plastic being utensil straws, bags? I do have a, an article from Coral Gables, they have banned plastic bags, I understand that there was a lawsuit, and we're not real sure where that is, but I did make copies of the articles, if you guys wanted to see it.
If you'd like me to respond to the status of that lawsuit?
Yeah, please.
What it was is, the City of Coral Gables, several years, was in litigation with the Retail Federation, Inc., because as you said, there's a statute that preempts your ability to legislate in that field.
Correct.
Coral Gables did, but when it came to the styrofoam, it wasn't necessarily plastic, but in the same regard, they're preempting on both, they just, it was on styrofoam. That case was at a local level, circuit court judge, state level, who ruled in favor of the city and said that, that statute, statute was unconstitutional. One of the things they looked at is, part of that statute was, the board was supposed to come back at state level with some recommendations, never did. State said they didn't do it, I'm going to find Coral Gables, you can proceed with your own regulations. That was appealed by their Florida Retail Federation to the Third District Court of Appeals, and that was appealed in March of 2017. They went to oral arguments in December of 2017, and they're waiting for a ruling from that court.
So we shouldn't do anything until we get.
So there is, right, there's no court that would have jurisdiction or precedent over us that has found that unconstitutional. That preemption is still there, so many cities are waiting to see what happens with that third DCA.
Okay.
What happens at the state level, you know, there's, legislation has periodically been introduced, which has died in committee or failed, but it's of, of great interest to many, many cities currently.
Yes, yes. Well, in that case, I would still ask that they look at the plastic straws and utensils. I understand there are things that can be done, products that are biodegradable in ninety days that can be used, so I would ask that we give direction to TEC to look at that and report back to us.
Okay, you have enough direction at this point, consensus?
Well, as far as TEC, that's something the council need to vote on, whether you want to give direction to TEC to do that, and then city manager would make sure that staff, you know, takes that to TEC.
Well, what I, what I heard was to change the makeup of TDC.
Well, I do have direction on that, but I think the second thing that Member Nelson mentioned was wanting to give direction to TEC to research an issue.
To research an issue on the plastic utensils and straws.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
I would make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Hearing one, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? You got it. Okay, back to, you're next.
Member Stokel.
Huh? No, I'm sorry, you, you already, you're on, which one are you on? Because I just like.
I was, I was on both of them.
Okay.
So, yeah, all right, thanks.
His, his, his light is next in order of going around once more. We'll get, we'll get to you, okay?
Okay.
All right, push your number in right now.
I have it on.
I know, but we were through, you were doing two, and we don't do two. All right, you got it.
Thank you, sir. So, yeah. So at, at a minimum, my hope would be, coming out of this, would be that at least council would entertain a workshop with other agencies. If it is, and I, I am understanding of the, the immense amount of funding that it could lead to, or so forth and so on collectively, and I, I, I get that. But I think as perspective to due diligence, I think it would be appropriate to at least figure out what, what do we have in our community and what standard. And, and the reason I say that is, if I look at the Indian River Lagoon, if I took the thought we could never do anything about it, well, it would be in worse shape than it is.
You know, I've, I've, just as a suggestion.
Sure.
But just so we don't step on anybody's toes, how about, would you consider going to our representative, Misty Belford, and talk about this with her and see what her feelings are?
And, and thank you, sir, I did, and I did with Representative Placencia, Misty Belford, Commissioner Pritchett.
It's our public, I mean, our school board that concerns me.
Correct. And, and all of them were, yes, please reply back with whatever council comes up with, so.
So what you're asking for is, is permission to put a, a group, a workshop together?
Correct.
Council, how's everybody feeling on that?
I don't have any problem with the workshop, as, as you were talking and, and listening to, you know, being a big part of, you know, our security at Titusville High School and the, the half cent sales tax and the security that we put up, and the initiatives that the school board's done, I, I'm feeling pretty certain they're going to say, you know, we're, we're on this. Then I, it wasn't long ago, I attended something at Parish Medical Center, similar to what you're asking for now, where they brought people together, I believe Sheriff Fivu was there and some others, and there's that sort of seminar on where are we, where do we go from here? What I'm saying is, I feel like that's being done out there, I don't think it's bad for us to, e- even if it's a symbolism that we would like to get involved and, and have something here, but instead of just having a workshop where we all kind of talk, I'd like to have somebody who's an expert and have some mental health people here, or do it at the hospital where they did that last time. I'm not opposed to it at all, I'm just saying that I think that there's an awful lot of similar things going on over and over, and why don't we get together with Parish, who seems to be the leader in the mental health area, and the school board, and say, you know, you guys have more kids than any of us, and that's, these things are where they're happening, and this is where we'd like to stop it, and, and have some sort of leader, like, kind of like we do when we do the budget, somebody up there that really knows where we're going, and say, what do you think about this? Well, no, you're wrong there. So, am I opposed to it? No, but do I think that it's kind of going on in all kinds of different areas? Yeah, and I, I'm not opposed to us having a workshop, but I'd like to have, have somebody, you know, walk out of the workshop feeling like, wow, they knew what they're talking about, we do need to go this direction.
Having a facilitator.
Yeah, that's the world.
Yeah.
Sir, going to speak to that?
Sure.
And, uh, very supportive of that. Here's where I, I believe there would, my hope would be, would be some differentiation, is that the, the, the one thing that I believe is that, that there is community engagement of which, we, we have beat, we need mental health to death, right? For the past three years, I mean, we have been screaming it. But for as much as we're screaming it, what I have yet to hear and say, and the actionable plan by all is, in the same methodology that we are using with the Lagoon, the implementation of that plan, and who's contributing to that resolve, at this point, I am feeling is inappropriate and has left gaps. And what I, I'm using social services that, like, as an example, when we go to find determined social services within the community, you, you go do a gap analysis, generally that costs money, I'm not asking for that necessarily, but I am asking for where are the gaps, and if we're three years into it, where are we at? Because it doesn't seem to necessarily be working, at least nationally, specifically in the state of Florida. And up until this year, I had a kid telling me that he was going to blow up the school, me. So the, 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 the reason that I, and that's not right, like, that's, that isn't right.
That's horrible.
But it is, but that is my day, and that is the day of high school now. And because of that, kid will be back next year, and I, is he going to be better? I don't know. So the end result, I, I hear you on that may be just too much to bite off and, and shoot for, but at least my hope would be to say, at least in the city of Titusville, if the Parkland guy shows up, this is exactly where we would be okay, this is exactly where we would fail, and here are the identified steps laid out, whether you want to do anything about it or not, totally up to you. And, and those, that conversation right now, I'm not necessarily hearing.
No, that's what I'm saying, we, we need, even with the, the Lagoon, you use as your analogy, when I came to Lagoon meetings here, we had experts up front telling us what we needed to do. I'm afraid if we're just looking at a workshop, you're going to have everybody come off the street and tell us what we should be doing, and why aren't we doing this, and why aren't you doing that? None of them are experts.
And, and that is what, and to that point, Member Diesel, that's why my, my hope would be definite, I would welcome a facilitator who is experienced in the field, who can help us, but that's why I might, when I say workshop, it's only with government agencies. I, I don't, I don't believe that this forum is a open, public, we need, no. We, we are doing that, and I think as a community, we are doing that, but I think that there is a different, there's, there's just a different reality that as a government agency, the impact that you can have, and.
I agree. I, I think that's a, a good angle to take, and again, I'm still kind of a big facilitator. I want to, I guess I'm going to a lot of coaches' clinics, and I don't want a bunch of coaches, I want somebody to tell me how, how you do this. And if we can have somebody tell us that, and maybe get with Parish Medical Center on that with some of their experts, not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Okay, Member Diesel, that's.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Number Stokel.
Well, you guys already said what I was going to say now. No, no, I was just going to say, I think.
Say it again.
I know, no, I, I do think that as a city, we are kind of limited on what we can do, but with what we can do, I think this is an excellent solution, honestly. Just being able to kind of facilitate, I think it'd make me feel more comfortable going out to citizens, knowing what is our, what, what is our action plan, what are we doing? I know we have the officers, which I think are great in the school systems now, but I just know from my own, like, knowing, Member Diesel, knowing Krista, who's a principal at Astronaut, Matt, who's at Space Coast, like, knowing those dynamics, and knowing that you guys are all probably doing different things there, bringing in the hospital, bringing in Misty, bringing in our house rep, I, I, I think there will be definitely some value added as that discussion's kind of going and circulating, that may be something where our rep could say, you know, maybe I can bring that, bring that to the house, or to the school board meeting, and just things that you might not think of without having that discussion and seeing really what's going on. I, I'd be very much for this, with what limited we can do, I think this would be an excellent solution for that, so I'd definitely be on.
And I'm going to suggest you bring DJJ in, and DCF, because I, at one point, I believe the sentencing matrix basically said we could not request counseling, family counseling, unless they got to this level. I don't know if that's, that's still in there, or that's true, or they're abiding by it, but to me, when a kid comes to school and has a problem, they're asking for help. So we need to pay attention to it, and I don't know that they're always paying attention to it. Lisbon Keterian actually, and Parish actually had a group for the suicide prevention, and this, that sort of overlaps with this. I don't know if it's worth partnering with them. I mean, they had the, the psychologist from Parish, so they did have some experts, and they could probably be very helpful about what needs to be done. And they had school board people on there, too.
You know, we're on a break for the next month. How about you go and talk to a few people on specifics? I think at, to this point, you just talk by generalities with them, and see, see what they can bring to the table. I mean, somebody might say, well, we got a great facilitator, and, and look at this, and then the next time we meet, you'll have plenty of time to, to get to whoever you want to get to, and then come back at the next meeting with, report on it.
Tom, great.
All right, let's do that. No problem.
Thank you, council.
Very good. That you, that you, did you?
No, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, that, I figured that was the one you had.
Yeah, that was.
Okay. Do, do we have to extend to ten o'clock or ten thirty? Ten thirty, that's what I thought. All right, we're on mayor's report, I believe. Oh, petitions, no, we, we have petitions earlier, yeah, mayor's report, not mayor's report, city manager's report.
Yes, sir. Have one action item and several information items for you. Council would ask us to prepare a resolution supporting the municipality's authority to exercise home rule to implement an ordinance to regulate the use of auxiliary containers, wrappers, disposable bags within city limits. We've done that resolution, it's twelve dash two thousand eighteen in my report, so staff is asking for your approval of this resolution for the mayor's signature, and we'll forward it to the Constitutional Revision Committee.
Bless you. Anybody want to make that? So you're looking for a, a vote on the resolution?
I've moved to approve the resolution, and I don't have the number in front of me.
Twelve, two thousand eighteen.
Twelve, two thousand eighteen.
Twelve, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Want to roll call on that, sir?
Oops, sorry, it's a resolution, you're right. Roll call, please, vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Diesel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Behringer?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
The second resolution council asked us to take a look at was the election resolution. It died in, in committee, it's not going forward with the Constitutional Revision Committee, so there's no need for us to pursue that any further. Wish council and the mayor a happy Memorial Day. There's a couple celebrations that you can go to. Of course, on Monday at nine o'clock, at the recently renovated Veteran Cemetery, there'll be a ceremony, and the second ceremony will be at Cape Canaveral National Cemetery up in Scotsmore at eleven thirty. Additionally, we have your budget workshop, and just a reminder, you'll be on recess during half the month in June, there will be no second meeting, so we wish y'all a good one, we have one more to go before that, and then Fourth of July. Subject to your question, this completes my report.
Anybody have any questions? I don't see any. All right, anything left for the good of the order? In that case, I will declare this meeting adjourned.